The council will come to order, the clerk will call the roll.
Alderman Laspada. Alderman Hopkins. Alderman Dow. Alderman King. Alderman Harriston. Alderman Sawyer. Alderman Mitchell. Alderman Harris. Alderman Beal. Alderman Zalowski-Garza. Alderman Thompson. Alderman Cardenas. Alderman Quinn. Alderman Burke. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Coleman. Alderman Moore. Alderman Curtis. Alderman O'Shea. Alderman Taylor. Alderman Brookins. Alderman Rodriguez. Alderman Tabarez. Alderman Scott. Alderman Sichu Lopez. Alderman Maldonado. Alderman Burnett. Alderman Urban. Alderman Talafaro. Alderman Cardenas here. Alderman Reboyos. Alderman Cardona. Alderman Wagaspak. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Alderman Austin. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Alderman Villegas. Alderman Mits. Alderman Spisato. Alderman Nugent. Alderman Vasquez. Alderman Napolitano. Alderman Riley. Alderman Smith. Alderman Tunny. Alderman Gardner. Alderman Kapelman. Alderman Martin. Alderman Osterman. Alderman Haddon. Alderman Silverstein. Your honor, we have a quorum present.
We have a quorum present. The pledge of allegiance will be recited by Alderman Reboyos. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remain standing for the invocation, which will be delivered by Apostle Stephen Garner of Rivers of Living Waters Ministry.
Good morning to Mayor Lori Lightfoot and the amazing councilmen who are here. I'm just going to pray for a few moments and touch on four things I believe are necessary for formidable leadership and the standard that this great city deserves to be executed by you amazing elected officials. Father, we thank you for the city council and thank you, Lord, for Mayor Lori Lightfoot and the vision she has to bring reform to the city of Chicago. And so I pray over this elected body of officials for a release of wisdom, even wisdom that will cause the affairs of this great metropolis to be guided with the discretion that is necessary to raise the standard for generations throughout the 50 wards that make up the city of Chicago. Lord, I ask that you would begin to give them situational wisdom and collective wisdom to deal with things trending that are taking away from the legitimacy of the city of Chicago, wisdom to deal with the beasts that have been ravaging in this city, to cause the desecration of the youth and the demise of family, and to cause economic indifferences and, Lord, even a false balance that breeds an abomination. I pray that you would endow them with wisdom and give them the intrinsic value that is needed to rise above their own issues and to deal with that which is greater concerning a future Chicago, to establish even through this administration, Lord, a precedence that will open up pathways for a brighter day to come. I pray also that there would be such a galvanizing of the collective wisdom that is present, and it will manifest by way of synergy, that there be a synergistic approach from the various degrees of skill and capacity present to bless the city of Chicago, and that the youth of this city would know that our leaders do care, and that the disenfranchised of this city will know that our leaders do care, and that those who have been cast away and ostracized and even those that have been neutralized because of socioeconomic differences would know that there is a governing body that cares for their well-being. And I pray for a pragmatic approach to the indifferences that are challenging and threatening the sanctity of the city of Chicago, that you would endow these leaders collectively with working solutions to bring about the change and the reform that has been preached but failed to execute in the order in which it touches the lives of its everyday citizens. And finally, let there come compassion. Every individual here represents a household, and the level of compassion they have for those that bear their blood and share their same surname, let it also be that level of compassion that is used to serve the greater good for the city of Chicago, that the future Chicago will know that through this administration and the collective leadership thereof, detailed attention was taken to empower the citizenship thereof. I bless you, and I bless these leaders, and I give you thanks for your favor on our city, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Good morning, Alderman. How are you?
I was at your church Sunday. I missed you.
Oh, I know.
I'll be remiss.
Thank you. Thank you. Did you enjoy service? What time did you go?
Walter was here. He don't want to go to our church.
Oh, yeah.
Public comment?
I know. The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. The time remaining for each speaker is shown on the clock on the wall. Pursuant to the Chicago City Council public comment process, time is not transferable to another speaker. Any written comments that have been submitted will be available for automatic review at the city clerk's desk. Please remember, this is a forum for public comments and not questions. The first speaker is Mr. Will Jennings.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Will Jennings, and I want to talk about what happened to me a while back. I worked on 79th and 1542 West 79th Street in Gresham. I was working with the youth in the neighborhood with ceasefire at the time, and so I had them on the block on 78th and Laughlin. I was going to do a barbecue for them. I went around to the office to get to everything, the barbecue grill and everything. I come back around the corner, officers, there's one in particular harassing my youth. You know, they was 16, 17 years old, you know, working with them, trying to keep them out of trouble. I get around the corner, he fussing with them, throwing them on the police car, and so I told the rest of them to go to the office. I pointed, and they walked away. I walk back around to the office, and he come with the whole 6th District. He brought the whole 6th District in there. I was really upset about it. They bomb rushed the office, come in there, grabbed me, took me to jail. I stayed in jail for two days behind this situation. He had no reason for doing that. I wasn't doing that. I was going to do a pop-up for my guys to barbecue for them. What happened was they, this one particular officer, he just snapped. You know, he remind me of the guy that shot Laquan McDonald. He had that look in his face, like, you know, "I'm finna get you. I got you." You know what I mean? And I was so outdone behind it, the way he treated us and the kids. You know what I'm saying? He shouldn't have done that, because we wasn't doing nothing. You know what I mean? I'm at work. You feel me? It was sad. It was a sad day for the Chicago 6th District to me, you know, for them to treat us like they did. So, to make a long story short, the officer that did it, I eventually got back at him, but still though, I was still upset behind everything he did to them kids. You know what I mean? And so with that, I'm going to leave it alone.
Thank you, Mr. Jennings. The next speaker is Ms. Maddie P. Sedetti.
Good morning, Mayor Lightfoot and city council members. I'm Maddie, and I represent Slaughter-Free Chicago and Animal Rebellion Chicago. So the time for ceremonial gestures is over. We need to act on climate change right now in every possible way, exploring all avenues to lower greenhouse gas emissions. One of the biggest contributors of these emissions is hardly ever talked about: animal agriculture. Not only is it responsible for up to 51% of greenhouse gases, including the most damaging of gases: methane, it also wastes water. It is the biggest driver of deforestation. It exploits and endangers workers. The consumption of animal products contributes to a myriad of diseases, and of course, it exploits billions of sentient, innocent beings who lead horrific lives full of suffering before being killed needlessly. Declaring a climate emergency really has to do with air quality. I have a statement from Patty, who works in a food processing plant with high-end clients and produce, where they produce meat. So John's Live Poultry is located at 5955 West Fullerton. It's the perfect example of poor air quality in the community. It smells so bad around there that many of the neighbors have written complaints. During the summers, the neighbors can hardly stand it. Unfortunately, the poultry laws and the IDOA and their list of violations have written nothing about air quality. Patty has been in a cell phone store next to it. The smell literally reeks through the walls. Many of these live poultry stores have vacant stores next to them because of the lack of cleanliness and air quality. This is also a sincere, like, waste of resources. So Patty works in a food processing plant where, like, the level of cleanliness and testing is so much more sophisticated than the 14 slaughterhouses where they have to still wear hairnets, beard nets, and disposable gloves. They have to wear disposable gloves. Why? She is outraged and appalled at the lack of caring by the city and inspectors. "I guarantee you," she says, "anything contagious that goes into those stores goes out contagious: salmonella, E. coli, listeria, foodborne pathogens and bloodborne pathogens, HIV and hepatitis. No one cares. The neighbors care, many of them..."
Thank you. The next speaker is Robert Grillo. My apologies. The next speaker is Ms. Suzanne Antoneas. Suzanne Antoneas.
Nobody gets it right, so we're going to get it right with our plan. Our plan is an economic plan, but money and families, individuals are levels of government's pockets. Both houses of Congress will be given two weeks' notice to implement our plan, or they do not return, U.S. Congress level. We want returns as ownership in companies according to the true profitability of trillion and billion-dollar corporations and banks. Stop ripping us off with the S&amp;P, Dow, Jones, and Nasdaq. It's an elite game. They can keep them for the annuities, but people won't need to put their money in annuities because they're getting great returns as owners of these corporations and banks according to the true profitability of them. Close tax loopholes. No more same-sex marriage. It is offensive to God. He controls the health and the weather. It's eroding our beaches and properties. It's going to get worse. Coronavirus. We need to be respectful to God. If you love your same-sex partner, fine, but you don't have to marry them. You have to get right with God. We are a nation under God, and God we trust. No abortions unless you are 18 or under, you're a minor, or a medical emergency. Immigrants can become U.S. citizens, can travel freely if they pass a background check. No Constitution test, no application fee. 15% off for tuition for 10 years for Jews. Restitution. 16 million were killed. We didn't do enough as United States of America. We should be ashamed of ourselves. They didn't know how to drop a bomb on Hitler. Shame on them. And 15% off for nursing home, retirement home, and caring for the aged in their homes or elsewhere. Chief of Police Beck, you can hire as many more officers as you want. We want the National Guard here. It is making news. People are scared to ride the CTA. People are afraid to cross the streets. This is 16 years too late. We want the National Guard here. They can carry their machine guns. They can start a curfew. When people have money coming in, they will be able to, on the 8th or 18th of each month, twice a month, or any day of the month, you go to the police station, you'll get $100 at least for your gun. They'll be able to buy stock. No more publicly traded ownership in companies. The board directors can determine the price of the stock. They'll get checks, thousands of checks. They'll buy more stock.
Thank you, Ms. Antoneas, for your comments. The next speaker is Mr. Robert Grillo. Robert Grillo.
My name is Robert Grillo, and I'm the flounder of Slaughter-Free Chicago. Our group wants to work with the mayor on a climate emergency action plan, which emphasizes three important points. The first is to cut ties and divest from animal agriculture interests. The second is to develop a plan to transition to a plant-based food system. And the third is to close Chicago slaughterhouses. The mayor has up to now ignored our efforts to connect with her. Animal agriculture is the single greatest human-caused source of greenhouse gases, land use, and land degradation, the number-one source of freshwater pollution, and the leading driver of deforestation. It is also a major cause of air pollution, habitat loss, and species extinction, and it is a highly inefficient use of limited natural resources. The United Nations has therefore called for a global shift to a plant-based diet wherever possible as the most effective way to combat climate change, world hunger, and ecological collapse. Larger U.S. cities like Chicago could cut its overall greenhouse gas emissions by up to 70% simply by transitioning to a plant-based food system, according to a study published in the Proceedings of the National Academy of Sciences. Finally, the city must close slaughterhouses, which needlessly contribute to the climate crisis, endanger public health, endanger workers and communities, and terrorize infant-age animals. Furthermore, slaughterhouses violate public health and zoning laws, which should in itself be grounds to close them permanently. Moreover, the symbol importance, the symbolic importance of ending slaughter in a city that once promoted itself as the slaughter capital of the world cannot be overestimated. Mayor Lightfoot, you told us, you told an activist of ours at the Conference of Mayors in Iowa that you thought slaughterhouses were a thing of the past. If you truly believe that, then how do you explain that we still have 14 slaughterhouses operating in Chicago? Alderman Vasquez, we would like to thank you for your support in helping us shut down Aiden Poultry Slaughterhouse in the 40th Ward where I live. Alderman Silverstein, we've met with you to show you gruesome footage of the Chicago Live Poultry Slaughterhouse in your ward. Not only does this footage footage show vicious treatment of birds, it also shows a number of public health violations. You have yet to find the moral courage to publicly condemn this horror. Alderman Thompson, we've seen and reported atrocities at Park Packing Slaughterhouse that have traumatized activists. For example, we reported a piglet slipping through the bottom of a truck whose lower body was dragged through the city streets for God knows how long. Alderman Cardenas, Burke, Solis, Tabarez, Laspada, Wagaspak, Villegas, Burnett, Rodriguez, Sichu Lopez, you all have slaughterhouses in your ward.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Grillo. The next speaker, the next speaker is Ms. Rachel Schaefer. Rachel Schaefer. The next speaker is Amanda Edenford.
Good morning to Mayor Lightfoot and the council. My name is Amanda. I have been to the slaughterhouse, and I would like to state eight ways slaughterhouses are bad for everybody. Number one is slaughterhouse work is dangerous. Workers are three times more likely to have serious injuries, such as amputations, broken fingers, burns, and head injuries than other American workers. Number two, workers are exposed to illness from blood, feces, and feathers. Rodents are attracted to the area, risking more disease. Number three, slaughterhouse work is violent. Many workers suffer from PTSD, trauma, post-traumatic stress disorders, and are more prone to substance abuse and domestic violence. Number four, crime, including violent crime, increases in places where slaughterhouses open. Number five, animals are abused, often left outside in extreme weather and in small overcrowded crates without water or food. Starvation can even lead to eating the weak and dead animals. Animals too sick or small to use for food are thrown in the garbage alive. Number six, workers tell us they dread their jobs and would quit if they could find other work. We can all help them find better jobs. Number seven, Chicago has laws to protect us from noise, odor, and foodborne illness that can spread from these killing factories. Number eight, we all pay a premium to live in Chicago. The laws and penalties for residents are strictly enforced: parking meters, city stickers, red light cameras. The laws for slaughterhouses must also be enforced. We have a website info at slaughterhousefreechicago.com.
The next speaker is Katrina Roberts.
Good morning, Mayor Lightfoot and fellow city council members. My name is Katrina Roberts, and I'm a part of Chicago, about, I'm a part of Slaughterhouse Free Chicago. All right, basically, as we heard from some fellow activists here, we all feel like that these slaughterhouses have been nothing more than a big contribution to climate change, but also, it's also been a detriment to mostly marginalized groups, mostly these illegal, most of them are immigrants, or possibly people of color, and they're mostly men of color for that matter. And somehow, seeing them working in such conditions is already as a detriment to them as they are to the animals, but they're the ones getting slaughtered in the process as well. And basically, as basically you just go and see in a slaughterhouse, you might as well start seeing everything that's going on around there. They're surrounded by feces and blood and said animals, where they're all being killed for the next food, for another family's next meal. And basically, we already are in the middle of trying to shut down every last slaughterhouse in the city of Chicago. And basically, we also, we also wanted to at least try and give these, other these people working in these slaughterhouses, like, better jobs. And this particular, as far as having to work in a slaughterhouse is concerned, they are likely to be exposed, they're more exposed to substance abuse, and also, they're liable to suffer mental illnesses like PTSD, depression, possibly suicide as well. And this is the last thing we wanted at this point. And being a longtime concerned citizen of this, being a longtime concerned citizen as well, and after this was over a decade, and also, several of us get so affected disorder, this is already mostly a big detriment to humanity as well. And it's just, and animals are more likely to become the victims of said, of said demisees. And, and also, after the last, in almost four years now, I've already have been going to these, having gone through these vigils, seeing what the, seeing how the backstory starts going. All these animals have been suffering from frostbite and high dehydration, and some were actually exposed to, also because of the, because of the weather and inclement weather, always gets a little disastrous at this point, because some of them actually died during transport to the, say, slaughterhouses. And if you have any heart, you will go in, you'll start checking out, seeing about these inspections, and start going, going to the nitty-gritty about these places, and they should be shut down for good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. The next speaker is Mr. George Blakemore.
This is not a meet-and-greet session for you Altymans. When these people come up to speak, you supposed to listen to them. We got young people over here, and you supposed to, Miss Lightfoot, you supposed to obey order here, order here. Have everyone to be seated, and if you don't want to hear from the public, you play like you do. The big problem here is institutional racism. This is the big problem in our nation. And black people, I'm here to tell you, you're not going to get your reparations. You didn't get it in 1865 and when they brought you over here. So if you want reparations, you have to give it to yourself. And when, Miss Lightfoot, you talking about war on poverty. That's the old one. We gonna do something about these ghettos. That's the old one. I don't believe it's going to happen unless black people make it happen. Black people gotta make it happen. If you waiting for government to make it happen, it's not going on. We got to make it happen. So again, the big issue in America and in the city of Chicago is institutional racism. We are never, we never receive our 40 acres and a mule. And our leadership is non-leadership. Non-leadership. What about that marijuana? White people made 18 million in no time. Do you think we gonna have the blacks? We gonna give, I don't think it's going to happen. No black, no white man gonna watch a black man get rich. No white gonna educate black people like black people can educate themselves. What happened to Black Wall Street? Drive-in black community, bummed it. And it'll never come back unless other black people bring, Miss Lassiter over there, you two Altymans, you sit down. You sit your bodies down. Sit down. This is not a meet-and-greet session. Sit down. And when the public come up to speak, you listen. And if you don't want to hear them, you don't need to be an Altaman, an Altawoman. You work for them. There's no big I and little u with the people. Again, I'm going to talk to my black people. Institutional racism is still alive in America, and we got white Trumps here. Right here we have them. You don't have to go to Washington, D.C., right here on this council. So black people, free yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Blakemore.
So again, the big issue in America and in the city of Chicago is institutional racism. We are never, we never receive our 40 acres and a mule. And our leadership is non-leadership, non-leadership. What about that marijuana? White people made 18 million in no time. Do you think we gonna have the blacks, we gonna give, I don't think it's gonna happen. No black, no white man gonna watch a black man get rich. No white gonna educate black people like black people can educate themselves. What happened to black Wall Street? Drive in black community, bummed it. And it'll never come back unless other black people bring, Ms. Lassiter over there, you two Aldermen, you sit down. You sit your bodies down. Sit down. This is not a meet and greet session. Sit down. And when the public come up to speak, you listen. And if you don't want to hear them, you don't need to be a Alderman, a Alderwoman. You work for them. There's no big eyes and little you with the people. Again, I'm gonna talk to my black people. Institutional racism is still alive in America and we got white Trumps here. Right here we have them. You don't have to go to Washington DC, right here on this council. So black people, free yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Blakemore. The next speaker is Nathaniel Smith. Mr. Nathaniel Smith. The next speaker is Mr. Nathaniel Smith.
We may not realize what is happening here in this moment, but history certainly will. Thank you very much to the Aldermen and the city officials that are taking part in declaring a climate emergency. This is an action that is a needed step and is a bold step, but it is also an action of necessity. It's not something that we get to organize alongside our plans, it's what the planet is telling us is going on and what can and cannot be done anymore. We have been told by people who like to watch plants and ice for their entire lives, that don't like to talk to people, that something is happening all across our planet. Ecosystems are currently collapsing. There are already lots of climate refugees and lots of systematic troubles that are happening and being spoken of in this very room that all needs to change in 11 years. We don't have 11 years to begin changing, we have 11 years to change. I beg of you to understand this because history certainly will.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. The next speaker is Sidney Sylvan Wallace. Ms. Sidney Sylvan Wallace.
In April of 2017, I intended a public affairs forum titled Police Shootings and Their Impact on Chicago Police Community Policing, in which the Police Accountability Task Force and Department of Justice reports were discussed by the then-president of the Police Accountability Task Force. I had been given the opportunity to go by chance through my volunteer work with the Jewish Council on Urban Affairs. I was terrified I would have been seen as an impostor and not deserving to be in the room with assistant state attorneys, civil lawyers, and the like, as I only worked in the mailroom and worried I wouldn't be taken seriously. However, I was the only one who raised my hand when asked who'd read over all the reports provided beforehand. One of the things that stood out to me the most in the executive summary of the task force report was this. The community has long been shut out of Chicago's police oversight system. Meaningful engagement with the community and giving the community power in the oversight system is critical to ensuring that officers are held accountable for misconduct. Finally, in the current system, there is no entity to police the police oversight system itself. There is no way to know if existing entities are performing their jobs with rigor and integrity and no entity is equipped to identify and address systemic changes regarding patterns and practices of misconduct or bias or to analyze policies and procedures to prevent future problems. Taking my children to school that morning before the forum, I told them I was 10, my oldest son, then nine, said to me, wow, Mom, you're like really going far with police accountability. Now all you have to do is convince Lori Lightfoot to tell officers to stop killing blacks, Hispanics, and Asians and you'll be done. Nearly three years later, and it doesn't seem I am close to being done. The Grassroots Alliance for Police Accountability has done the work on the ground in the community all across the city and has been in conversations with City Hall to finalize our ordinance. We have pushed and fought to ensure the community's voice and desires are heard, but they appear to be falling on deaf ears. In an effort to work with the mayor, we compromised only having a vote of no confidence that would trigger action by city council. This has now been rejected as taking too much power from the office. The word legitimate in regards to the civilian makeup of the commission has recently been thrown around in a manner that could be interpreted as a dog whistle signifying that the poor and oppressed are not the ones who matter to this city. However, I'm not going to interpret what City Hall is saying. I'm going to instead read a quote from the press conference introducing GAPA in March of 2018 by supporter, police task force president Lori Lightfoot. Quote, "I'm not going to try to interpret what the mayor is saying. What I know, after looking with my lawyer's eye at the details of the draft ordinance, that I think that the structure that has been put together is one that will complement the work that is being done right now on the ground by the police department, by COPA, and by the police board. There's nothing to fear here unless you are entrenched in the status quo. And as I already said and think is true, the ship has sailed on that. We are going, moving in a direction different and it would be good."
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Wallace. The next speaker is Mr. Darrell Dakers. Mr. Darrell Dakers.
Hello, Mayor, Council, morning, everybody. My name is Darrell Dakers. I'm here with One North Side and the Grassroots Alliance for Police Accountability, GAPA. And I work with, I work in violence prevention and outreach. I'm currently attending the Peace Academy with CP4P Communities Partnering for Peace. I'm here today representing young men and women in our neighborhoods who've been stopped, frisked, harassed, profiled, beaten by Chicago police officers. I lived through countless CPD stops and counseled dozens of young people as they processed their experiences with police officers. Black and brown community members like myself know more than anyone what it's like to be stopped by the police. In fact, I say a lifetime experience is dealing with police and my participants makes me an expert. When it comes to matters of police safety and basically police work. Our GAPA proposal creates a commission where experts like me can join together and have a real voice in how policing happens in our community. I'm here to say that there are many more Chicagoans like me who have valuable experiences that make us experts. Well, young people, I want young people to have, with live experience, to have a spot on the civilian oversight commission because I know firsthand the harmful impacts of police policies. Before I go, I want you all to, I want you all to remind, I want to remind you all that the consent decree on police reform is a temporary thing. The consent decree isn't an excuse to pass a weak ordinance and the consent decree isn't enough to create a change we need to feel in the streets. Chicagoans like me and the young people I work with deserve long-term permanent solution that holds police accountable. The GAPA ordinance creates that. A long-lasting permanent solution with commission made of community members, including experts like me. I'm holding you, Mayor Lori Lightfoot, and this city council to pass a strong civilian oversight with policy drafting and a vote of no confidence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dakers. The next speaker is Ms. Sylvia Panek. Sylvia Panek.
Thank you. I'm with 350.org Chicago and I'd like to say that major cities around the world like London and New York and even countries like Ireland have made the pledge to divest from fossil fuels. Why? Because it's not just a moral case, but it's a fiscal one. This is a pivotal moment for our humanity when you're looking at the fossil fuel energy sector. It's been the poorest performing, poorest performing in the past decade and the fossil fuel divestment pledge around the world has risen now to $15 trillion. We've been engaging the city, but so far it's only committed to a carbon-neutral portfolio for the city's budget. And I'd ask, who tries to bail water out of the boat at the same rate that it's coming in? You plug the hole first. If even Jim Cramer of CNBC's Mad Money says that the fossil fuel stocks have been hearing their death knell, that's something. When ExxonMobil, which for over almost 100 years has been the top 10 S&amp;P 500 darling, but not anymore, that's a signal. Since 2014, Exxon has lost nearly $200 billion in market value. And they're not alone and it doesn't look like that's going to bounce back. We need you, our leaders in Chicago, to see the writing on the wall that our institutions cannot continue to fund the climate crisis. Fiscal prudence demands better because banking on a bounce back for fossil fuels is suicidal. So thank you for your consideration and please fight for our future.
The next speaker is Ilia Sulamani.
Good morning, Mayor Lightfoot and city council members. I am here today representing Animal Rebellion Chicago and Slaughter-Free Chicago. While I commend you for making a declaration of a climate emergency, I must remind you that a declaration alone is not enough. The future of our planet is at stake and we need to act on climate change immediately. We need to do everything possible to lower greenhouse gas emissions. I want to talk to you today about one of the biggest contributors of greenhouse gas emissions, which is animal agriculture. Like Maddie said earlier, animal agriculture is responsible for up to 51% of greenhouse gases, including methane, which is the most damaging of gases. What many people do not know is that the city of Chicago is still home to 14 slaughterhouses. I know because I live near a slaughterhouse in the 32nd Ward. This establishment affects everyone in our community. The delivery truck arrives at midnight and from my window I can hear the cries of chickens that are crammed into crates with no room to breathe. They are brought inside the slaughterhouse with a variety of other birds as well as rabbits and guinea pigs waiting to be killed. I cannot open a window or the smell will be let into my apartment. The building itself is extremely filthy and unsanitary. Workers walk around with blood-soaked aprons and there are feathers on the ground which can sometimes also be found in the alley outside. This could very easily spread disease. The coronavirus began in slaughterhouses in China due to unsanitary conditions and something similar could potentially happen in Chicago if actions are not taken to shut down these establishments. These slaughterhouses have violated a multitude of city zoning and public health laws that should be enough to shut them down. However, the laws are not being enforced. Shutting down these slaughterhouses is the first and most important step in promoting a plant-based diet for the citizens of Chicago, which would help the environment immensely. If everyone in Chicago stopped consuming animal products, we would cut our city's greenhouse gas emissions by up to 70%. Mayor Lightfoot, if you care about the future of our planet, you must work on closing the slaughterhouses, cutting ties with animal agriculture interests, and promoting a plant-based food system. Otherwise, this climate emergency declaration is nothing but a declaration and our city will continue to suffer. Thank you.
All speakers who have timely submitted witness slips for public comment period have been heard.
This concludes the public comment period.
A resolution from Mayor Lori Lightfoot and the members of the city black, city council Black Caucus. Whereas it is especially appropriate during Black History Month for the members of this chamber to honor author and investigative reporter Nicole Hannah Jones for her lifelong commitment to journalism and particularly for her steadfast and dedicated coverage of race relations and civil rights in the United States. And whereas Ms. Hannah Jones' career in journalism began at a young age in Waterloo, Iowa, where she attended an almost all-white school as part of the voluntary school busing desegregation program. She wrote about her experiences in the high school newspaper. And whereas in 1998, Ms. Hannah Jones earned a bachelor's degree in history and African-American studies from the University of Notre Dame in 2003. In 2003, she graduated with a master's degree from the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill School of Journalism and Mass Communications, where she was a Roy Ouch Park Fellow. And whereas after completing her graduate studies, Ms. Hannah Jones began her career in journalism covering education for the Raleigh News and Observer, a position she held for three years before moving to Portland, Oregon, where for six years she did feature work for the Oregonian and expanding her writing portfolio to include demographics, government, and the census. And whereas inspired by Ida B. Wells, Ethel Payne, Simon Booker, Claude Sutton, and heroic reporters who wrote about race in the face of adversity and frequent threats against their lives, Ms. Hannah Jones joined the New York-based nonprofit news organization ProPublica in 2011, where she worked for three years as an investigative reporter covering civil rights and chronicling how official policies and laws such as redlining and lack of enforcement of the Fair Housing Act perpetuate systemic and institutional racism. And whereas in 2015, Ms. Hannah Jones became a staff reporter for the New York Times, where in 2019, she wrote the first essay published as part of the 1619 Project to mark the 400th anniversary of American slavery, an ongoing initiative begun by the New York Times Magazine, which aims to reframe the country's history by placing the consequences of slavery and contributions of black Americans at the very center of our national narrative. And whereas an internationally recognized authority on housing discrimination, racial segregation and desegregation and resegregation of American schools, Ms. Hannah Jones, many accomplishments include serving on the National Advisory Commission for Civil Disorders and being named Journalist of the Year by the National Association of Black Journalists, a three-time recipient of the Society of Professional Journalists Pacific Northwest Excellence in Journalism Award. Ms. Hannah Jones is also a recipient of the 2012 Gannett Foundation Innovation and Watchdog Journalism Award, 2013 Sydney Award for Outstanding Investigative Journalism in Service of the Common Good, 2015 Peabody Award, 2015 Fred H. Schinger Grand Prize for Distinguished Education Reporting, 2016 George Polk Award in Radio Reporting, and 2017 MacArthur Foundation Award. A 2017 Emerson Fellow at the New American Foundation, she is currently writing a book on school segregation titled The Problem We All Live With, which is scheduled for publication in June. And whereas in addition to her many literary achievements in 2015, along with fellow African-American journalists Ron Nixon, Corey Johnson, and Topher Sanders, Ms. Hannah Jones confounded, co-founded the Ida B. Wells Society for Investigative Reporting, which provides fellowships, trainings, and mentorship to aspiring journalists of color around the United States and partners with numerous universities to promote the study of journalism. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the mayor and members of the city council of the city of Chicago, assembled this 19th day of February 2020, do hereby recognize Ms. Hannah Jones for her stellar career in journalism and her unfailing commitment to promoting honest discussions about race in America, to confronting racial injustice and inequality, and to better protecting the civil rights of all Americans. And be it further resolved that a suitable copy of this resolution be presented to Ms. Hannah Jones as a token of our appreciation and esteem. Congratulations.
The chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
President, I move for the temporary suspension of the rules for immediate consideration of this resolution.
There are no objections, so ordered. Would anybody like to speak to this, Alderman Irvin?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Ms. Hannah Jones, for your courage. This is a very difficult topic in our community and in our country, but you had the courage to tackle this thing head-on. After being introduced to the subject by our colleague Alderman Sophia King, had an opportunity to take somewhat of a dive into the work that you done on this, on this matter. And to look at the scholarly work that you've done and the evidence that you presented, and sometimes you judge the work by the criticism. And when I find that folks like Newt Gingrich and folks to the far-righters to have taken real issue with what it is that you talked about and presented, that means that you're probably on the right track. You've talked about the sin of what we today call human trafficking, but for years in this country, the issue of slavery truly has not been addressed in the fashion that it should have been. I can recall, my people are from Tallahatchie County in Mississippi, in the town called Webb, and I actually happened to go there once younger as a child. And not this past, this past summer, I was in Lee County, Arkansas, with my mother-in-law. And I never knew what it was like to pick cotton. Having been in that situation, my generation and those that are behind us, we don't know and understand the toil that our people went through to get to where we and understand the toil that our people went through to get to where we are today. And when I saw the little pieces of cotton about 12 to 18 inches off the ground and how people worked from sunup to sundown, pulling bales of cotton and doing the work that other folks would not do. And the work that our community has done to build what exists today, when you look at the White House, when you look at the Washington Monument, when you look at all of these things that are part of American history, built on the backs of Black men and women from our culture for free. Now, some people may have a challenge and a problem when folks talk about, should we celebrate Juneteenth as a holiday? They have a problem, but should we talk about reparations? There's a problem. But yet still, the work that our community has done to build this great country, many times have been forgotten. So thank you for bringing a lot of the history and the misinformation that has been taught, bringing it forward to the present so that we as a community can know and understand the value that we have, that we come from a great people. And at this point in Black History Month, I think it's appropriate that we honor someone like yourself who has decided to take this issue head-on and do the right thing. And I know that it can be at times troubling that you don't get the respect and get to do that you are deserved, but today, we wanted to set aside this as a small token for the work that you've done and our appreciation for what you are doing and what your work will provide for people. When I think about my three-year-old daughter, that she will now have a better understanding and light about our plight and about our history because of individuals like yourself who've decided to take this issue head-on. Thank you and God bless you.
The chair recognizes Alderman Hadden.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution. This morning, members of the Black Remembrance Project, organizers of Black Culture Week, individuals in the MFA Redemption Project, Black Caucus Alderman, and other leaders in the Black community had a press conference to celebrate our efforts to make Juneteenth an official holiday in the city of Chicago. We gave some updates. I want to recognize that we got strong support from all of the members of city council, 41 co-sponsors on this, and I know some of you are going to want to join. We've had support from the mayor's office, but most importantly, this was work done by community members making this an issue. I want to thank you, Ms. Hannah Jones, because they've told me about the 1619 Project being one of the impetus for kind of making this an issue for us now in Chicago. You and your work, you're inspiring people to keep fighting, to learn our history, to celebrate our struggles, and to fight for our future. And I just want to share, I have like a ton of quotes from your particular essay in the 1619 Project, but I just wanted to read a quote from something that you've written here. So, "The truth is that, as much democracy as this nation has today, it has been born on the backs of Black resistance. Our founding fathers may not have actually believed in the ideals they espoused, but Black people did. As one scholar, Joe R. Fegan put it, enslaved African-Americans have been among the foremost freedom fighters this country has produced. For generations, we have believed in this country with a faith it did not deserve. Black people have seen the worst of America, yet somehow we still believe in the best." Thank you for your work. It's going to continue to inspire us to move forward, and I appreciate you being here today, and I hope you got to listen to some of the public comment from residents who come to tell us what we still need to work on here. So, thank you.
The chair recognizes Alderman Metz.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I too want to appreciate Ms. Jones for coming here today and for the work that you've done. You don't often hear where Blacks talk about the history, the past. So when I hear it come up, I'm always elated because that's me. When Alderman Irvin spoke about picking cotton, I picked cotton. I was one of those, if you want to call it slavery, I call it surviving. I call it what we had to do when you didn't have anything else to do in order to eat. I call it a lot of love being in the homes. I knew something was wrong because in 1955, Emmett Till got killed in Tutwali, Mississippi, where my mother lived at. And I moved to Arkansas, but we had to flee in the middle of the night. Crazy. Every Black child that was around was threatening to be killed, particularly Black boys. It was a time where we couldn't just go walk freely. It was a shame that somebody would sexually assault us, or we were wound up, killed or hung or left out, hanging on a tree. Those are the life that I lived, walking miles and miles to school. Whereas your parents may not have been able to have had that education, they really thrived in us to get that education. They really put it in our hearts to want to learn. But most importantly, what they did for us was, they taught about a faith, that faith that brought our peoples from slavery, that faith that know that you can do all things, that faith to know that you can survive. You may not have had the riches, and I never knew what that was. I came from $4 a day, working 10 hours a day in the field, picking two bales of cotton, Alderman Irvin, and then going home, working in the field at your own house so that you could eat. It wasn't easy, but do we know that we've come a long ways? And yes, I have to tell you, racism still exists, but it's not just the racism that exists. We have to learn to first work together. The problem with Blacks was conquer and divide. And we have that stigma today of conquering and dividing. And we have to learn to grow up and be able to reach back and help our young brothers and sisters to understand that they didn't just get here on a silver spoon. They got here because folks have fought for us, just like yourself telling the story. We can't run from what we was. You can't hide. It is what it is. And today, I always tell my children and take them back to see roads that we walked to school on, one pair of shoes, not on a bus, but on a truck, and then get to the bus to take you to school. Can you imagine? Can you imagine in the day and the time we're living in now, how we're not appreciating the fight that's been fought for us? Tell the story. Everybody knows, the more you tell the story, the more people begin to understand the struggle of the Black race, what has been taken from us. Every time I go south, I can look at acres and acres of land where I can say, yeah, we was out there with a chainsaw, cutting them trees down. We fixed that land where they're building it. They got a plant on it now where they building and making money from it. But yet, we cut it down just so we could keep warm. That's how they use the Blacks to do all the work, and the Whites are benefiting from it today. You know, it's time that we're going to have to just continue to educate our children because the fight is still there. You can say we're free, but are we free? I want to thank you and would love to sit down and talk to you because I listen to the elderly, so I have some stories that probably no one would even think that took place, or even that I experienced myself. Remembering the first time to have a bathroom, the first time to have a bathroom inside your house? Some of you all probably don't even know nothing about that, but it is what it is. There are peoples now in third world countries don't have bathrooms today. It ain't just what happened back then. Folks still are depressed, but as a race, love, love conquers all. And when we get through putting the love in our heart and take care and take what we have that God then gave us already, use those resources, pass them out, spread them out. If you can't use it, give it to someone else to make this world a better place that we live in. So let me say congratulations to you. Thank you. You are well-deserving to be honored here today, and I'm glad to talk about Black history. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam President, Alderman Metz, that was so powerful, I can hardly speak, but I rise to be associated with this important and timely resolution as well. I want to thank you, Nicole Hannah Jones, for uplifting the history and the present-day conditions of Africans in America and spreading truth throughout the nation as we think about and discuss the 400th anniversary of the arrival of the first slaves to the eastern shores and our experience since that first ship landed in this country. You have done our country a great service. It's no secret that slavery is the origin of what made our nation viable and vibrant. And unfortunately, our history as African-Americans in this country has been marginalized, and our many, many, many contributions have gone uncelebrated, minimized, and even removed from the history books. You, Ms. Hannah Jones, have put our history front and center. Despite the long lingering effects of centuries of oppression, hardship, and hurt, we've made tremendous progress despite having to overcome unspeakable tragedies and obstacles, many of which have been described by Alderman Metz and Alderman Irvin today. If this country truly, truly lived by the words as stated in the Declaration of Independence, that we hold these truths to be self-evident, that all people are created equal, as stated in our most honored Declaration of Independence, the entire country would be in much better standing. Everyone, Black, White, Latino, Asian, LGBTQBT, and more, would be able to fully self-actualize and our institutions in this country would be respected and fully supported. I'm so proud to represent the 3rd Ward and a community where the sons and daughters of historic Bronzeville uphold a rich legacy in the fields of music, art, literature, commerce, science, politics, publishing, and more. Where Black History Month was founded by historian Dr. G. Carter Woodson, who uttered the following words, "If race has no history, it has no worthwhile tradition. It becomes a negligible factor in the thoughts of the world, and it stands in danger of being exterminated." So thank you, Madam President, for bringing forward this resolution. And you, Ms. Nicole Hannah Jones, thank you for your groundbreaking work so that we never forget. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Kapelman.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution for Ms. Hannah Jones. Last Monday, Chairman Sawyer hosted a town hall meeting at Black Ensemble Theater where we talked about reparations. It was powerful. It was taped. I encourage every, all of my colleagues to see it, especially my colleagues who are white. In 1991, I took a course at UIC and was working my master's in social work. Professor Rose talked about a study that was done that talked about our ancestors. And if you had ancestors in this country back in 1860, there was a direct correlation from the amount of property your ancestors had in 1860 to the amount of education you have today. In 1860, slaves had no property. In 1860, my family had 200 acres. I have seven brothers and sisters. All eight of us have a bachelor's degree. Half of us have a master's degree. I remember being in first grade where it was just assumed I would be going to college. I recently read this book, How Democracies Die, and it talked about this polarization that exists in this country. And much of it is due to income inequality, and most especially because of institutional racism that haunts this country and haunts this city. It's not enough for us as white people to apologize. We have to make amends. And if we don't, it will haunt us and it will continue to haunt the next generation and the next generation and the next generation. It's time to make amends. Thank you, Madam Chair.
The chair recognizes Alderman Curtis.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, God is so awesome. Not only did he blow life into our bodies, but he also gave each and every one of us a purpose in life. And the most important thing for all of us to do is to find our purpose that he's given us. I think we could cut down on a lot of violence in our school, in the city of Chicago, if we continue to fight to put African-American history back in the high school curriculum. I think that's very important. I want to thank you, Nicole Hannah Jones, for giving us your life purpose and to continue to educate us as we continue our plight as African-Americans. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Madam President. How apropos, I couldn't have scripted this moment better. First of all, I want to recognize my colleague, Alderman Sophia King, for bringing you to our attention, but I definitely have heard of your works, but for her to allow us and push us to recognize you, not even push, but just to bring it up. And it's so timely because it's not just history, it's also present. And you've been a valuable part to making sure that our history is told, but not only the history, but as I said, the present. As I kill two birds with one stone, how apropos because today, as we're pushing for a holiday of Juneteenth, that is critical. As yes, we celebrate Independence Day, but again, everybody wasn't independent and everybody wasn't free at that time. But also, how apropos, because today, we have students from Adam Clayton Powell Academy up in the balcony, if they stand up, and their teacher here, Mrs. Charles, they're here because they were able to do research and do some studying. I didn't know them. They're not in my ward, they're in my colleague, Alderman Greg Mitch's ward, but they were studying, and they were studying, and they came across this man named Jean Baptiste Pointe du Sabo, the founder of Chicago, and many of them didn't know he was the founder of Chicago. How can you not know a Black man is the founder of Chicago? Because there's nothing out there that specifically says that. There's nothing that's critically out there so those students can talk about. And so as they work together with me, as we try to and work to rename South Shore Drive, it's because of people like you who write the information down, who keep it out there in the forefront for our leaders in our community to be recognized so that these children that are here today, that are looking at you, they'll have something to be proud of every day of the year. So it's not just history, it's the present. And it's just so almost embarrassing that in 2020, you have to ask, what's in it for the Black people? You shouldn't have to ask that, but you have to ask it, what's in it for the Black people? And if you don't ask it, then you won't get it. And so we appreciate you, thank you for your works that you're doing and will continue to do, and it's just an honor for us to be able to... honor for us to be able to honor and recognize you. Thank you so much, and thank you so much, Madam President, for bringing this resolution.
I also stand with the body of this council to speak on this resolution. Okay, you got to raise your hand, please. Our Chair recognizes Alderman King.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. I too stand in honor of recognizing Ms. Hannah-Jones as we continue to celebrate the achievements, both past and present, of pioneering African Americans like yourself. I'm especially proud of the work that you have done in spearheading the project, the 1619 Project, along with the New York Times, which seeks to reframe the country's history by placing the consequences of slavery and the contributions of black Americans at the very center of our national narrative. For as long as one can remember, our people have been subject to great injustices and inequity, often lingering in the shadows. Often, our work is minimalized by the phrase, pull yourself up by your bootstraps. Well, how many times do you pull, do you have to pull yourself up by your bootstraps? Slavery, lynching, race riots, redlining, killing of young black men with impunity. We are resilient people. We continue to pull ourselves up while building America for you. Removing these injustices and shifting our nation forward requires shining a light on them. As pioneering investigative journalist Ida B. Wells stated so eloquently, "The way to right wrongs is to turn the light of truth upon them." Well, today, we honor another pioneering journalist, one who has continued to shine that light and serve as a beacon to others in the field. Ms. Hannah-Jones, Ms., excuse me, Ms. Hannah-Jones' work has been instrumental in driving discussions around important topics such as housing discrimination, desegregation, resegregation, and race in American schools, among many others. Her work often requires her to expose truths, the hard truths, one that institutions don't often want exposed. This is where her resilient nature and those of the many race-based journalists before her shines so bright. As I mentioned earlier, her leadership on the 1619 Project is especially exciting. Ms. Hannah-Jones, supported by the New York Times, initiated this project with the goal of reexamining slavery and the contribution of African Americans in the United States. Her work has received widespread acclaim. Perhaps she saw the commercials during the All-Star Game and the Oscars. I applaud the New York Times for standing behind her in this effort and committing resources and continued support for this project. I applaud them for standing behind her and others who use the project as inspiration. I applaud you, Mayor, for understanding the importance of her work and standing with the Black Caucus to honor Ms. Nicole Hannah-Jones today. Initiating difficult conversations isn't easy, but one can't have a conversation until it begins. Ms. Hannah-Jones, you have begun many of these conversations, and I implore you to continue having them, for you are an inspiration to many and a leader for us all. Thank you for your diligence and your perseverance. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Anyone else want to speak on this resolution? All right, I think we're good. I also stand with the entire body of the City Council to speak on this resolution. Today, Nicole Hannah-Jones is best known for her role in the New York Times Magazine's 1619 Project, but her body of work, which she has built up over years and across mediums, stands as an explanation, exploration of the dimensions of slavery's 400-year legacy on our nation and our national identity, revealing how our past is very much our present across every facet of our society, particularly in the homes we live and the schools we attend. One aspect of experiencing Nicole's work is that no matter how present-day her subject may be, you are never allowed to escape the sense of its brutal historical past, and it is brutal. As Nicole herself said, her work seeks to, quote, "force us to confront our hypocrisy, force us to confront the truth we would rather ignore." Just as reading Nicole's work can be devastating and enraging, it is also empowering, empowering to know the truth, to see our light, and to see the bridge between our past and our present and the future we want to create. I also want to commend Nicole for her work in supporting and giving voice to the next generation of journalists and true tellers. As we celebrate Black History Month here in Chicago and across America, we celebrate the voice with which Nicole speaks and the narrative she tells. That, as Nicole wrote in the 1619 Project, quote, "We were once told by virtue of our bondage that we would never be American, but it was by virtue of our bondage that we became the most American of all." I think you can, you can glean from the powerful testimony from members of the council today, the rawness of the emotions, and that the past is very much our present. Thank you for illuminating our past so that we can move forward toward a better tomorrow. Thank you very much.
Madam President, I move adoption of foregoing resolution in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Resolutions.
A resolution from Mayor Lori E. Lightfoot and the members of the City Council Women's Caucus. Whereas domestic violence, sexual assault, dating violence, and stalking undermine safety and justice across all communities, and whereas domestic violence does not discriminate and anyone of any race, age, sexual orientation, religion, socioeconomic background, or gender, can be a victim or perpetrator of domestic violence, and whereas according to the Bureau of Justice Statistics, on average, 24 people per minute are victims of rape, physical violence, or stalking by an intimate partner in the United States, more than 12 million women and men over the course of a year, these violent crimes often result in severe mental, physical, and economic trauma, and whereas in an effort to address domestic violence, Congress passed the Federal Violence Against Women Act in 1994. The Act sought to improve criminal justice and community-based responses to domestic violence, dating violence, sexual assault, and stalking, and whereas the Act established the Office on Violence Against Women within the Department of Justice to provide a wide range of program services to address epidemic of domestic violence, including community violence prevention programs, funding for victim assistance, services like Rape Crisis Center and hotlines, and legal aid for survivors of domestic violence. And whereas the Act's passage and reauthorization in 2002, 2005, and 2013 have changed the landscape for victims who once suffered in silence and has helped the justice system, acknowledge that domestic violence in all of its forms is a crime that our society will not tolerate. And whereas despite the progress made under the Act, domestic violence, sexual assault, dating violence, and stalking remain a national public health issue, and this violence disproportionately impacts women, children, and LGBTQI individuals, and whereas the Violence Against Women Act has once again expired, and it must be reauthorized, to continue the progress made to stem domestic violence and to serve and protect its survivors. And whereas the City recognizes and applauds the successful efforts made under the Act, but acknowledges that there is much work ahead, and look forward to the day when no one is subject to the scourge of domestic violence, now therefore be it resolved that we, the mayor and members of the City Council of the City of Chicago, assemble the 19th Day of February 2020, do hereby recommit to eradicating domestic violence as a necessary first step supporting the reauthorization of the Violence Against Women Act, and we also commend and offer our sincerest thanks to the social workers, advocates, organizations, law enforcement officials, healthcare providers, and others who work tirelessly to end domestic violence and offer services to its victims. And be it further resolved that suitable copies of this resolution be presented to Senators Richard Durbin and Tammy Duckworth as a sign of our commitment to this important
Alderman Mitchell. Move to extend the rules.
I move adoption of...
Suspend the rules.
I move the temporary suspension of rules for the resolution.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Alderman Mitz.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to commend you and the City Council for introducing this resolution today, and glad to be able to be associated with it. As we continue to have the domestic violence seminars every year throughout the community, I have learned so much about women's being terrorized, misused, and abused, fearful, fearful for their children, and just to be able to continue to make the awareness that no one has to accept any of these mistreatments is very helpful, and is very helpful to be talked about, so as our younger women's continue to grow up, they don't have to accept abuse from no one or nobody putting their hands on them, or trying to get them to do things that they don't want to do, or sex trafficking. All of these things affect a woman for the rest of their life if that were to occur to them, and many of them are still barriers to have to overcome because of being abused. In whatever way or form, it shouldn't happen. So thank you, and we hope that this is received by Senator Durbin and Tammy Duckworth. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this resolution? Hearing none. We all take an oath to protect those we serve. That holds true for anyone who serves in the council, the state Capitol, and/or in Capitol Hill. As many of you recall, nearly 25 years ago, Congress fulfilled that oath and passed the Bipartisan Violence Against Women Act, improving the criminal justice system and strengthening community-based responses to domestic violence, dating violence, sexual assault, and stalking. And yet, as mayor and a former prosecutor, I know one piece of legislation did not end this epidemic, and here are some startling facts. One in five women and one in 71 men will be sexually assaulted at some point in their lives. One in three women and one in six men experience some form of sexual violence, and women of color are disproportionately affected by gender-based violence. So disturbing are these statistics, one would think these crimes are frequently reported, but if you think that, you're wrong. 63% of sexual assaults go unreported. Why? Because survivors are terrified, terrified they'll face retaliation or even death, terrified they'll be rejected by those they love, terrified that they'll be ridiculed publicly, like more recently, Dr. Christine Blasey Ford, or previously, Professor Nita Hill. Survivors try to move forward, but they live with inconceivable trauma. Sexual violence has fallen in the last 20 years, and the Violence Against Women Act is certainly a significant reason why. The Me Too movement has given new survivors strength to share their stories, stories that nobody should have to experience, live with, or share. Congress must act. These are common sense reforms, lives depend on them, and I want to thank those who are in this work and have dedicated their lives for this very important call, cause, to uplift the victims and to make sure that we, as a community, do more and do better. I want to say thank you for your strength and courage of every survivor in Chicago. We believe in you, we see you, and we hear you. Alderman Mitchell for the adoption.
Madam President, I move adoption of the foregoing resolutions in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
I now move we return to the regular order of business.
No objection, so ordered. Communications.
A series of communications from our honor, the mayor, to the honorable, the City Council of the City of Chicago. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of City Controller, I transmit here with an ordinance amending section 2-32-03 of the Municipal Code Regarding Insurance Collateral. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor. Refer to the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the City Controller, I transmit here with an ordinance amending chapters 3-43 and 3-44 of the Municipal Code Regarding Taxes on Shipments from Outside Chicago. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor. Refer to the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of City Control, I transmit here with an ordinance amending chapters 4-156 of the Municipal Code Regarding the Amusement Tax. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor. Refer to the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of City Control, I transmit here with an ordinance amending chapters 9-100 of the Municipal Code Regarding Vehicle-Related Violations. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor. Refer to the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of Commissioner of Housing, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of a loan agreement and issuance of housing revenue bonds for Casa Veracruz. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor. Refer to the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of Commissioner of Housing, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of a multifamily housing loan, property conveyance and amendment to redevelopment agreement from Heartland Phoenix House. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor. Refer to the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with ordinances amending various TIF plans. Your favorable consideration of these ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor. Refer to the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement for the Ramova Theater. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor. Refer to the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Budget Director, I transmit here a Fund 925 Amendment. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor. Refer to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing a Class L tax status for property located at 226 West Jackson Boulevard. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor. Refer to the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of Commissioner of Transportation, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the sale of air rights in conjunction with the Union Station Transportation Center. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor. Refer to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of Commissioner of Assets, Information, and Services, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of a license agreement with the Bucktown Community Organization. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor. Refer to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Assets, Information, and Services, I transmit here with ordinances authorizing the execution of lease agreements. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor. Refer to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with appointments to various special service areas. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor. Refer to the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, I have reappointed Stephanie Cox Batson as a member of the Board of Ethics for a term effective immediately and expiring July 31, 2023. Your favorable consideration of this appointment will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor. Refer to the Committee on Ethics and Government Oversight. Ladies and gentlemen, I have appointed Lisette Castaneda as a member of the Chicago Community Land Trust Board for a term effective immediately and expiring February 1, 2021, to succeed Patricia Abrams, whose term has expired. Your favorable consideration of this appointment will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor. Refer to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with appointments to the Low Income Housing Trust Fund Board. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor. Refer to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. I City Clerk Anna Valencia hereby inform the City Council that the following documents were filed in my office relating to the respective subjects designated as follows: Mayoral proclamation of disaster in the City of Chicago; notification of sale of City of Chicago General Obligation Bonds Refunding Series 2020A; notification of sale of City of Chicago Sales Tax Scrutination Bonds Series 2028 and 2020B; fund loan notification of City of Chicago Multifamily Housing Revenue Notes Series 2020A and 2020B, Park Site 4 Phase 2; Inspector General's advice regarding police and fire departments' failure to use biometrics for timekeeping purposes; Inspector General Audit Follow-Up Regarding Police Department Overtime Controls; and Inspector General's Quarterly Report for Period ended December 31, 2019. I City Clerk Valencia also inform the City Council that those... I, City Clerk Valencia, also inform the City Council that those matters which were considered by the City Council at the regular meeting held on January 15, 2020, or which were required by statute to publish in book or pamphlet form, or one in more newspapers were published in pamphlet form on February 6, 19, 2020, by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies in the Journal of Proceedings of the City Council of the City of Chicago. I also inform the City Council that the ordinance amending an ordinance with authorized the issuance of City of Chicago General Obligation Bonds for project costs and/or funding purposes and providing for the levying collection of a direct annual tax, which was passed by the City Council on January 15, 2020, which was requested to be published in special pamphlet form, was published in special pamphlet form on January 23, 2020. I also transmit here with the following miscellaneous communications and reports regarding City Council action. Zoning Reclassifications of Particular Areas, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards, Claims Against the City of Chicago, which are referred to the Committee on Finance, Recommendation by the Commission on Chicago Landmarks for Designation of the Chicago, and Northwestern Railway Office Building at 226 West Jackson Boulevard, is a Chicago Landmark, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. Recommendation by the Commission on Chicago Landmarks for Designation of the Mount Piscay Missionary Baptist Church Complex at 4600-4626 South Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Drive, is a Chicago Landmark, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. Issuance of Permit to Install Digital Signboard at 105 West Chicago Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards, and issuance to permit to install a signboard on 5917-5929 South Wentworth Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards.
Committee reports. Committee on Finance Chairman Wagasback.
Thank you, Madam President. Reporting for the City Council's Committee on Finance, which met February 18, 2020, item number one is an ordinance authorizing the City of Chicago to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Park District to provide tax increment financing in the amount of $3 million for Williams Park and the Third Ward. The item was approved by the committee by voice vote. If no one wishes to speak to this, or I can have Alderman Dowell close on the issue.
Alderman Dowell.
Thank you, Madam President. I spoke before the committee on this. I'm thankful for your support on the use of $3 million in Bronzeville TIF funds and also the support of my colleague Alderman King for the construction of a very much-needed field house in Dearborn Homes, which will serve the children of Dearborn Homes and the students who attend Drake Elementary School. It's a big improvement from the little 1,000-square-foot hut that they played in before. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chairman Wagasback.
Madam President, I move to concur with the recommendation of the committee by a roll call vote.
Madam Clerk, roll call.
Alderman Laspada. Alderman Hopkins. Alderman Dowell. Alderman King. Alderman Harrison. Alderman Sawyer. Alderman Mitchell. Alderman Harris. Alderman Beal. Alderman Zalaski Garza. Alderman Thompson. Alderman Cardness. Alderman Quinn. Alderman Burke. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Coleman. Alderman Moore. Alderman Curtis. Alderman O'Shea. Alderman Taylor. Alderman Brookins. Alderman Rodriguez. Alderman Tabarez. Alderman Scott. Alderman Sechel Lopez. Alderman Maldonado. Alderman Burnett. Alderman Irvin. Alderman Talafaro. Alderman Reboyes. Alderman Cardona. Alderman Wagaspack. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Alderman Austin. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Alderman Vegas. Alderman Mitz. Alderman Spazado. Alderman Nugent. Alderman Vasquez. Alderman Napolitano. Alderman Riley. Alderman Smith. Alderman Tunny. Alderman Gardner. Alderman Kapelman. Alderman Martin. Alderman Osterman. Alderman Haddon. Alderman Silverstein.
In a nail-biter, the votes are 49 to 0. Alderman Thompson on the motion for reconsideration.
Madam President, motion to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the reconsideration of the vote signify by saying aye. All opposed, say no. The motion fails. Alderman Wagasback.
Madam President, item number two is regarding monthly settlements through the Law Department, and this will be placed on file with the clerk. Items three through five consist of authorizations for various charitable solicitation or tag day permits, authorization for the payment of various small claims against the city, and denial of payments of various small claims against the city. If there is no objection, I ask that these items be placed in the omnibus.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Item number six consists of three orders authorizing Corporation Council to enter into and execute settlements in the cases of Etheridge, Cortez, and Rodriguez. I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider, unless anyone wishes to be recorded as voting no.
The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Madam President, could we have a roll call vote on this, please?
Madam Clerk, you call the roll. Are you asking for a roll call vote as to just a point of clarification, as to all three, or as to one in particular?
First one for Etheridge, I believe we're breaking them up one by one.
So, can you clarify for us what you're seeking a roll call vote on so we proceed accordingly?
Thank you again, Madam President. May I have a roll call vote on item A, number six, please?
And that's Chairman Wagasback, just so the body is clear, can you tell us what the item is?
Sure. Item 6A is the Etheridge versus City of Chicago. Pardon me. Item 6A is Etheridge versus City of Chicago for $10 million.
Madam Clerk.
Alderman Laspada. Alderman Hopkins. Alderman Dowell. Alderman King. Alderman Harrison. Alderman Sawyer. Alderman Mitchell. Alderman Harris. Alderman Beal. Alderman Zalaski Garza. Alderman Beal. Alderman Thompson. Alderman Cardness. Alderman Quinn. Alderman Burke. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Coleman. Alderman Moore. Alderman Curtis. Alderman O'Shea. Alderman Taylor. Alderman Brookins. Alderman Rodriguez. Alderman Tabarez. Alderman Scott. Alderman Sechel Lopez. Alderman Maldonado. Alderman Burnett. Alderman Irvin. Alderman Talafaro. Alderman Reboyes. Alderman Cardona. Alderman Wagaspack. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Alderman Austin. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Alderman Vegas. Alderman Mitz. Alderman Spazado. Alderman Nugent. Alderman Vasquez. Alderman Napolitano. Alderman Riley. Alderman Smith. Alderman Tunny. Alderman Gardner. Alderman Kapelman. Alderman Martin. Alderman Osterman. Alderman Haddon. Alderman Silverstein.
Alderman Garza is...
Alderman Garza votes aye. Alderman Mitchell votes aye. Alderman Coleman votes aye.
The ayes are 36, and the nays are 15. Alderman Harris on the motion for reconsideration. Say it again. Oh, yeah, it is 51. Somebody passed elementary school math.
She changed her vote to a yes. She changed her vote.
I believe she changed her vote. She said no. All right. After a recount. The ayes are 35, the nays are 15. Alderman Harris on the motion for reconsideration.
Madam President, I move to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the motion is denied. Chairman Wagasback.
Thank you, Madam President. Item B is the case of Ruiz-Cortez versus City of Chicago in the amount of $400,000. This was Ruiz-Cortez versus Llewellyn and the City of Chicago. I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider, unless there is anyone wishing to be recorded as voting no on item B.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Item C is Cruz-Rodriguez versus City of Chicago in the amount of $270,000, and I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider, with the exception of anyone wishing to be recorded as voting no on this item.
The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to request a roll call vote on this matter.
Madam Clerk.
Alderman Laspada. Alderman Hopkins. Alderman Dowell. Alderman King. Alderman Harrison. Alderman Sawyer. Alderman Mitchell. Alderman Harris. Alderman Beal. Alderman Zalaski Garza. Alderman Thompson. Alderman Cardness. Alderman Quinn. Alderman Burke. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Coleman. Alderman Moore. Alderman Curtis. Alderman O'Shea. Alderman Taylor. Alderman Brookins. Alderman Rodriguez. Alderman Tabarez. Alderman Scott. Alderman Sechel Lopez. Alderman Maldonado. Alderman Burnett. Alderman Irvin. Alderman Irvin? Alderman Talafaro. Alderman Reboyes. Alderman Cardona. Alderman Wagaspack. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Alderman Austin. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Alderman Vegas. Alderman Mitz. Alderman Spazado. Alderman Nugent. Alderman Vasquez. Alderman Napolitano. Alderman Riley. Alderman Smith. Alderman Tunny. Alderman Gardner. Alderman Kapelman. Alderman Martin. Alderman Osterman. Alderman Haddon. Alderman Silverstein. Alderman Dowell votes no.
The ayes are 34, the nays are 15. Alderman Thompson for the motion for reconsideration.
Madam President, motion to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. The motion fails. Chairman Wagasback.
Madam President, this concludes my report from the Committee on Finance. Madam President, at this time, I move to go out of the regular order of business to immediately consider unfinished business.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Madam President, I have one item that I noticed up pursuant to Rule 41. This is the authorization for a settlement order for Godinez versus City of Chicago. This was deferred and published and appears in the Journal of Proceedings on December 18, 2019, as OR 2019-512. If no one wishes to speak on this item, I move passage by the same roll call vote as applied to the first item presented by the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion for reconsideration.
I scan the audience, and I see Alderman Lopez.
It must be my outfit. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Chairman. I'm glad that we're finally addressing this Godinez case once and for all. For the reminder of my colleagues, this was the gangbanger in Brighton Park that was so fueled by alcohol and cocaine in his system, enough that normally would kill a normal human being, is now suing, his family is now suing the City of Chicago. He is known for terrorizing our communities. He is known for negatively impacting the quality of life in our neighborhoods. And while the video that they showed you showed you our officers trying to restrain him, the 13-minute clip I sent you showed you him trying to escape, capture, evade arrest on four different times throughout that video, even being willing to crawl under a vehicle with its engine running, burning himself, injuring himself, all because he was so enraged by the drugs in his system that he was beyond control. I'm glad we're finally voting today. We've ducked and dodged long enough. Our reckoning is here now to tell our taxpayers, to tell our residents, is this the behavior that gets you money from the City of Chicago? And I encourage all of you, as we look at all the lawsuits and all the settlements that keep coming before us, to reject this one. Send a message, not only to the people in my community in Brighton Park, but throughout every community where people feel they can get away with the violence that they perpetrate and now possibly be rewarded for it. It's a message we must say no to. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez, yes?
Thank you again, Madam President. And if there are no others, I would ask for a roll call vote on this matter. Thank you.
I believe the Chairman Wagasback will speak to this issue.
Madam President, I know this is another difficult case for all my colleagues to listen to in the briefings, see the video, and we have a lot of these cases that come before us. And I appreciate whichever side you take, however you want to vote. But one thing we have to remember when we get these cases, it is very unfortunate, but we take the victim as we find them. We have to essentially look at the situation at the end of what happened, not all of the issues at the front end, even though that's taken into consideration. As a lot of you know, Godinez was fueled up, as Alderman Lopez said. However, he died in the ambulance on the way to the hospital, and there was video that showed the officer with the foot in his chest. And we can't deny what the video shows. As we see more and more video, as we see more and more audio, we are working to make sure that we're presenting that to the aldermen so that they get the full state of each one of these cases as best we can. What the mayor's done in bringing in COPA, the Law Department, the Police Department, those offices involved in risk assessment or risk management with the new chief risk officer, is working to minimize these issues before we get into these kind of situations. But this one today, as we talked about back in December, both in the briefings and the public hearing, is that our victim died in the ambulance in our care, in the care of the City of Chicago, and if we did not go for this settlement, the amount could be much higher, as is the case with a lot of others. So, however you vote today, that is fine, but I think we need to be aware of the fact that as we move forward on these, we, as a body, have to make sure that we're changing the way the Police Department works. I think the mayor's starting to do that. Having officers in who are talking to us about these different issues and how they play out is very important, and I'm glad to see that for the first time in a long time. I think we have one other person that wishes to speak to it, but after that, we can move to the roll call vote that Alderman Lopez is... to the roll call vote that Alderman Lopez has asked for.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Thompson.
Thank you, Madam President. I was not going to speak, but listening to my colleagues, I felt I needed to. I appreciate their perspective on this, but I take a different approach as we look at these cases. They're difficult cases. In this particular case, we're not here to judge the police. I know many of the officers that were involved in this case. I know they're good police officers. I know they'll be cleared. Many of them have already been cleared. It's not the conduct of their behavior at that night, but we as a body have the responsibility for the fiscal stability of the City of Chicago. And when we look at a case like this, and we talk to and we briefed by our own attorneys, and it's going to cost us more money with the number of law firms involved in this particular case because of the people involved, it's going to cost us more money to taxpayers, more money to litigate this, even if we win. And I'm not here to judge, and this isn't the case for us to make that decision whether we support the police. I support the police as much as anyone. This supports the police by having the fiscal stability to continue to pay them, to pay their pensions. We as a fiscal, we have the fiscal responsibility. And you could win a loser and lose a winner, as you know as a lawyer here in Cook County. And so in a case like this where we can settle for less than it's going to cost us to litigate it, I think it's prudent for us as a body to look at the financial picture and make a decision based on the totality, not on the circumstance. We're not judging these police officers at all. We're trying to help the police in all of our city with the fiscal decisions that we make. And so because of that, I'm supporting this decision to settle this case for less than it would cost us to litigate it with the surety that there would be no more fees, fines, or any other financial impact on the City of Chicago. Thank you, Madam President.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Spazado.
Thank you, Madam President. So I too wasn't going to speak, but I feel the need to speak now. As a first responder, the whole ninety-second thing, putting his foot on his back, whatever, I've been there, done it, folks. There's a handful of us here that have been in situations like this where these hyped up criminals have super, superhuman power that it takes five or six or ten firemen, policemen to pin them down. They're extremely violent. Just because we had an officer that had his foot on a guy's back for ninety seconds, that to me doesn't warrant this settlement. I respect what my colleagues have said about sometimes we have to try to cut our losses, but I believe, and I say this in our briefings all the time, sometimes we have to take a stand and say, we're not going to stand for this anymore, and let's roll the dice. And maybe the smart people over there, the attorneys, maybe they're right, and maybe the high school diploma guys like me will be wrong, and then we could say, moving forward, then we know a little bit more. But I just think we have to take a stand sometimes, and this is one time I have to take a stand, and I cannot support this, and I will be voting no. But everybody, vote your conscience. But thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
In 2009, I was the city manager of the Village of Maywood. I was sitting in the judge's chamber. In my pocket I had six checks, one for $100,000 and five for $50,000. I was there because of an action that the Maywood Police Department took. I knew walking in there that we were going to leave out of there with some of these checks in my pocket or perhaps none of these checks in my pocket. It's unfortunate that the situation that we find ourselves in, but we also have a responsibility to the taxpayers. We understand that we have the, we want people to do the right thing, and sometimes those two things don't go together. I agree with Alderman Thompson in the fact that we need to cut our losses in some cases. The one we just did at 10 million, I thought was a little much, but to cut our losses on something that potentially could be higher at 1.2, given all of the people that are involved, I think is a prudent decision. Now, no one likes to write these checks. No one likes to do this, but we face a reality that going on these civil rights cases, these 1983 claims where you can get whacked for fees when the person only gets a dollar, that is a crucial point, I think, that we sometimes forget in these cases. And as the alderman stated earlier, to cut our losses and not speaking ill or for or against the police, but we have to make fiscally responsible decisions. Now, if you want to roll the dice, put your money on the table. If you want to roll the dice. But when we cannot take that position when dealing with the taxpayers' money, we can't take that position. But again, nobody likes it, nobody likes to write these checks, but nonetheless, it's a function of being a municipality with the Police Department that has some challenges that we have to address. So as we begin to go through this process and through our consent decree, through COPA and through our Public Safety Inspector General, we need to work on mitigating this point. So we're not here having this conversation, but we are here, we just need to deal with this and move on. As unfortunate as the circumstances are, we still must deal with these things and move on. This is nothing that any other municipality does not face, but again, we have a larger target because we are a large municipality with a large number of police officers, and this, quite frankly, is a cost of doing business in an environment, in a very litigious environment here in Cook County. Now, we can do as asked and roll the dice and find out that we may not have any insurance down the road. I don't think that's the right decision for us to make, and given the litigious nature and given the verdicts that have come out of this of Cook County, we may even be hard pressed to find somebody to insure us on our excess liability. So these are some serious questions, and as I talked to the Chairman of Finance before, that we really need to think about and address because we can take a cavalier attitude, but again, put your money on the table if you want to roll the dice.
I believe we have a request for a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Alderman Lasbada, Alderman Hopkins, Alderman Dow, Alderman King, Alderman Hairston, Alderman Sawyer, Alderman Mitchell, Alderman Harris, Alderman Beal, Alderman Zalaski Garza, Alderman Thompson, Alderman Cardness, Alderman Quinn, Alderman Burke, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Coleman, Alderman Coleman, sorry, Alderman Moore, Alderman Curtis, Alderman O'Shea, Alderman Taylor, Alderman Brookins, Alderman Rodriguez, Alderman Tabarez, Alderman Scott, Alderman Sichal Lopez, Alderman Maldonado, Alderman Burnett, Alderman Irvin, Alderman Talafaro, Alderman Reboyas, Alderman Cardona, Alderman Wagispack, Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez, Alderman Austin, Alderman Ramirez Rosa, Alderman Viegas, Alderman Metz, Alderman Spazado, Alderman Nugent, Alderman Vasquez, Alderman Napolitano, Alderman Riley, Alderman Smith, Alderman Tunny, Alderman Gardner, Alderman Kapelman, Alderman Martin, Alderman Osterman, Alderman Haddon, Alderman
The ayes are thirty-seven, the nays are thirteen, the motion passes.
Madam President, motion reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All opposed, say no. The motion fails. Alderman Wagisback.
Madam President, I'm not aware of any other unfinished business, so I move to return to the regular order of business.
Hearing no objection, so ordered. Committee on Zoning, Chairman Tunny.
Madam President, members of the City Council presenting a series of reports for your Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, which was held, which was held a meeting on February 13 of 2020. These reports are grouped for convenience. The following items were passed by a majority of the members present. Page one contains a mayoral amendment of municipal code titles 4, 10, 11, 4A, 14B, 14F, 14N, 14R, 14X, 15, and 17 regarding amendments to the Chicago Construction Code. I hereby move passage of this item by the last most favorable vote of the Finance Committee and associated motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Next, page one contains a mayoral amendment, I'm sorry, pages one through 11 contain various map amendments in the first, fourth, eighth, eleventh, twelfth, nineteenth, twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, thirty-second, thirty-third, thirty-fifth, thirty-sixth, thirty-ninth, fortieth, forty-second, forty-third, forty-fourth, forty-fifth, forty-sixth, and forty-seventh wards. Before I ask for a motion, we have a list of Rule 14s for Alderman Burke, and I will read the document number and the address and the general reason for Rule 14. So I'll start with item number 0219682, that's 2501 North Damon Avenue. And Alderman Burke will abstain from voting on these items. Within the past 12 months, Alderman Burke practiced law with other attorneys in the law firm, and the attorneys in the firm provided legal advice to pertinent parties on these developments within the preceding 12 months, therefore his recusal. The second, and from now I'll just do the code or the item number and the address, the second is 02020-94, that's 421 through 451 North Michigan Avenue, 137 through 209 East Illinois Street, and 458 through 478 City Front Plaza Drive. Next item, 02019-5570.800, oh, I'm sorry, that is address of 800 West Lake Street. The next item is SO 2020-114, the approval of a plat of Vienna re-subdivision that was in transportation. Well, you know what? I think the rest of them will be from the Transportation Committee as those recusals are from transportation. So with that, those are the zoning recusals, and I move passage of these items by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
And then page 11 contains various large signs over 100 square feet in area, 24 feet above grade in the third, 19th, 22nd, 32nd, I'm sorry, the 27th, the 32nd, the 41st, and the 44th wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Madam President, that concludes my report.
Alderman Rosa.
As voting aye on the first item of Finance.
So reflected. Committee on Budget and Government Operations, Chairman Dow.
Yes. Thank you, Madam President, and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on the Budget and Government Operations, which held a meeting on February 10. The committee recommends passage of the following item, a substitute ordinance concerning an amendment to the annual appropriation ordinance year 2020 within Fund Number 925 for the Office of the Mayor, the Department of Housing, the Department of Public Health, Department of Assets, Information and Services, the Mayor's Office for People with Disabilities, the Department of Family and Support Services, the Chicago Police Department, and the Department of Fire. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider. That concludes my report.
Hearing no objection, so ordered. Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development.
Madam President, members of the City Council, reporting for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development, which held a meeting on February 11, 2020. The committee has a series of reports recommending passage of the following items. Items one through seven are a series of appointments or reappointments to various special service areas. Michael V. Rafferty to SSA number 18, North Hall State Commission; Priyanka Patel to SSA number 23, Clark Street Lincoln Park Commission; Roberto Arista and Christopher Johnson to SSA number 24, Clark Street Commission; Peter O'Brien, Sr. to SSA number 48, Old Town Commission; Valinda Alexander to SSA number 50, Calumet Heights and Avalon Commission; and Brian J. Griffin to SSA number 55, 111th and Kedzie Commission. I move passage of these items by the first favorable roll call, the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Item eight is an amendment of the Municipal Code, Chapter 16-14, by modifying various provisions of the Neighborhood Opportunity Fund Ordinance. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Thank you, this concludes my report.
Committee on Ethics and Government Oversight, Chairman Smith.
Madam President, members of City Council, reporting for your Committee on Ethics and Government Oversight, which held a meeting on February 13, 2020. The committee considered and recommends passage of one item, a substitute ordinance amending Chapters 2-156-110 of the Municipal Code of Chicago, modifying various sections concerning interest in city business. I move passage of this ordinance by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objection, so ordered, Madam Chairman.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Committee on Environmental Protection and Energy, Chairman Cardenas.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman. Want to thank the mayor for her leadership on climate change. I want to report on the committee's efforts, which held a meeting on Monday, February 10, 2020, to consider one item, Resolution 2020-81, resolution's a declaration of a climate emergency and calls for the initiation of an emergency climate mobilization effort. City Council will work with the mayor's office and the city departments to develop a budget that promotes urgent climate action in coordination with the mayor's environmentalists. We will roll out a climate action plan and a just transition plan by this time next year. This resolution passed unanimously by all committee members present and my co-sponsor of the resolution as well. And as a co-sponsor, I'd like to say a few things. First, we know, and we heard from a lot of folks who spoke today during testimony, that climate change is real, it's making the earth less habitable, and definitely changing our diverse ecosystems. This is happening all over the world. Global warming, just for facts, two degrees Celsius, let alone 1.5, can be a matter of life and death for vulnerable populations. Take cities, for example, here in the U.S., and I'll give a few cities that are going through, or will be going through tremendous change. Miami will face catastrophic flooding by 2100, New Orleans by 2070. It's estimated that under current trends, will be no more. Hate to see New Orleans go, to be honest, a great city. Chicago, by the way, is in one of America's most severe heat zones. I didn't know this until I started researching this. According to scientists from the University of Michigan, that Chicago will experience more severe heat waves like this one and the one that happened in 1995 where 700 people died due to heat exhaustion. Los Angeles, Seattle as well will face severe flooding, tremendous drought in the upper Los Angeles, California area. And worldwide, cities like Venice are disappearing, Sydney in Australia, Glacier National Park in Montana, our Amazon, the Amazon is facing extreme droughts as well as in jeopardy, Maldives, and again, Key West in Florida, Napa Valley, California, Rio de Janeiro, Alaska, Dubai, Abu Dhabi, obviously it's desert, face of your heat waves. The point is that it's real, it's happening to a lot of cities, our worlds is going to change as we know it. There are plans, just in case we don't get it straight, to put a dam on the North Sea costing about $500 billion. We hope that doesn't get to that point, but that's how extreme it's becoming from a planning standpoint in order to save our cities. standpoint in order to save our cities here in North America and beyond. As we know, our choices matter, especially individual choices, and just not enough that we just say it and hear kind of talking about it to combat climate change. We cannot continue as usual, and this is why I applaud the Mayor's efforts. She just recently declared an emergency on the lakefront, as we know that that's facing severe catastrophic events as well. And it's an issue that we need to manage. So as Chicago declares a climate emergency today, we join over thirteen-hundred other jurisdictions and cities in twenty-seven countries installing the alarm. My co-sponsor, Alderman Martin, not sure if he wants to say a few things as well on this item, that I think is hugely important. I know he's been also out there talking about it, or any other Alderman for that fact, if they wish to speak. I'm happy to yield the floor.
All right, there's no- Got it covered there, Chairman.
There's no objection, I move passage of this item by the last most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance and its associated motion to reconsider. I do appreciate the comment, Chairman.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you so much.
Committee on Health and Human Relations, Chairman Sawyer.
Mr. President and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Health and Human Relations.
I like bacon. I like bacon, sorry.
You both have slaughterhouses in your wards, and you both opened a new packaging plant that will work in Kansas.
Just got one word to say, bacon. Thank you, bacon.
Love it.
I love bacon.
Yeah, I love bacon.
I love bacon.
Y'all better tighten up y'all, get people out of here.
Mayor likes food, Mayor likes chocolate, Mayor likes coffee.
Chairman Sawyer, why don't you continue your report, please?
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Health and Human Relations, which held a meeting on January twenty-eighth, 2020. The Committee has a report recommending passage of the following items. From the Mayor's Office, item number zero-two-zero-two-zero-dash-nine-seven, amendment of Municipal Code Sections two dash one-twenty dash four-ninety and two dash one-twenty dash five-hundred regarding establishment and composition of commission on human relations and advisory councils. Items number A-two-zero-two-zero-dash-two through seven are a series of appointments to those committees. And item number R-two-zero-one-nine-dash-six-eight-eight, a resolution introduced by Alderman Rodriguez calling for all government agencies affiliated with juvenile justice to review and compare their policies to recommendations by Convention on Rights of Child and Global Study on Children Deprived of Liberty. All passed committee. I move passage of agreement by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
This concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman. Committee on Housing and Real Estate, Chairman Osterman.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Housing and Real Estate, which held a meeting on Tuesday, February eleventh, 2020. The Committee has a series of reports recommending the passage of the following. Item number one is an ordinance for the renewal of a lease agreement with five-seven-one West Polk LLC for use of twenty-five parking spaces within city-owned parking lot located at eight-hundred South Desplains in the twenty-fifth ward. I move passage of this agreement by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Mr. President, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman. Committee on License and Consumer Protection, Chairman Mitz.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the City Council. I'm reporting for the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. We held a meeting on February thirteenth, 2020, to consider the following ordinance. Item number zero-two-zero-two-oh-dash-one-zero-one, a substitute ordinance to amend Section nine dash one-one-two regarding taxi medallion revocations, Mayor Leif and Commission of Business Affairs and Consumer Protection. Item number two, zero-two-zero-two-zero-dash-one-two-three, an ordinance to amend Section four dash six-zero dash one-three-oh regarding hours of operation for taverns holding retail food licenses, Alderman Smith, Turney, Riley, Hopkins and Martin. Four ordinance regarding more returns in various wards, thirty-six, forty-two, forty-four. These recommendations were concurred in by a voice vote of the members of the License Committee on February thirteenth, 2020. Mr. President, I move at the City Council, concurring the recommendation of the License Committee by the same roll call as item number one of the Committee on Finance and the same unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chairman. Committee on Public Safety, Chairman Talia Faro. Oh, excuse me, I'm out of order, excuse me. Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, Chairman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President, reporting for your Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, for which a meeting was held on Thursday, February thirteenth, 2020. Before the Committee, there were two-hundred-and-ninety-eight items, there were two-hundred-and-ninety routine items that passed and eight routine items that did not pass. There was one item introduced by Alderman Michelle Smith of the forty-third ward and Alderman Thomas Tunney of the forty-fourth ward, and an amendment of the Municipal Code Section nine dash six-four dash zero-nine-zero by creating non-for-profit organizations' one-day residential parking daily permit pilot program. If there is no objections, I move for the passage of these ordinances in the Honibus. That concludes my report, thank you.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Committee on Public Safety, Chairman Talia Faro.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Public Safety, for which a meeting was held on Thursday, February sixth, 2020. There was one item before the Committee, an amendment of Municipal Code, Chapter eight dash four, by adding new Section eight dash four dash three-zero-five concerning unlawful representation of network drivers. A substitute ordinance was presented and was passed by voice vote. If there are no objections, I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Committee on Public Safety, Chairman Talia Faro.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Public Safety, for which a meeting was held on Thursday, February sixth, 2020. The Committee has a series of reports recommending the passage of the following. Item number one is an ordinance for the renewal of a lease agreement with five-seven-one West Polk LLC for use of twenty-five parking spaces within city-owned parking lot located at eight-hundred South Desplains in the twenty-fifth ward. I move passage of this agreement by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item two is an authorization for the city to execute a landlord lease agreement with Cook County as a tenant for forty-three-fourteen South Cottage Grove in the fourth ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Mr. President, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman. Committee on License and Consumer Protection, Chairman Mitz.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Housing and Real Estate, which held a meeting on Tuesday, February eleventh, 2020. The Committee has a series of reports recommending the passage of the following items. Item number one is an ordinance for the renewal of a lease agreement with five-seven-one West Polk LLC for use of twenty-five parking spaces within city-owned parking lot located at eight-hundred South Desplains in the twenty-fifth ward. I move passage of this agreement by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chairman. Committee on Public Safety, Chairman Talia Faro. Oh, excuse me, I'm out of order, excuse me. Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, Chairman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President, reporting for your Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, for which a meeting was held on Thursday, February thirteenth, 2020. Before the Committee, there were two-hundred-and-ninety-eight items, there were two-hundred-and-ninety routine items that passed and eight routine items that did not pass. There was one item introduced by Alderman Michelle Smith of the forty-third ward and Alderman Thomas Tunney of the forty-fourth ward, and an amendment of the Municipal Code Section nine dash six-four dash zero-nine-zero by creating non-for-profit organizations' one-day residential parking daily permit pilot program. If there is no objections, I move for the passage of these ordinances in the Honibus. That concludes my report, thank you.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Committee on Public Safety, Chairman Talia Faro.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Public Safety, for which a meeting was held on Thursday, February sixth, 2020. There was one item before the Committee, an amendment of Municipal Code, Chapter eight dash four, by adding new Section eight dash four dash three-zero-five concerning unlawful representation of network drivers. A substitute ordinance was presented and was passed by voice vote. If there are no objections, I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, that concludes my report, thank you.
Committee on Transportation and Public Way, Chairman Brookins.
Thank you, Madam President, reporting for your Committee on Transportation and Public Way, a meeting which was held on February eleventh, the following ordinances were passed by the majority of the members present. Pages two through twenty-five include two-hundred-and-eighty ordinances for grants of privilege introduced by the local Alderman from wards one through eight, ten through twelve, fourteen, sixteen through eighteen, twenty, twenty-two through thirty-three, thirty-five through fifty. On page twenty-six includes twelve ordinances for canopies introduced by the local Alderman from wards three, ten, twenty-five through twenty-seven, forty-two and forty-five. On page twenty-seven includes eight ordinances for sidewalk cafes introduced by local Alderman from wards one, twenty-seven, forty-two through forty-four, forty-six and forty-seven. On pages twenty-eight through thirty include nineteen ordinances for miscellaneous items introduced by local Alderman from wards three, eight, eleven, seventeen, twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-seven through twenty-nine, forty-two, forty-three, forty-five and forty-seven. On page thirty-one includes a transportation matter located in the fortieth ward. On page thirty-two includes subdivision ordinance located in the thirty-second ward. On page thirty-three includes three vacation ordinances located in the second, twenty-fifth and thirty-fifth wards. And on page thirty-three includes an ordinance for an agreement of easements located in the forty-second ward. Your Honor, I also would note that Alderman Burke has abstained from voting on the following items. SO-two-zero-two-zero-dash-one-one-four, zero-two-zero-two-dash-five-two-eight, zero-two-zero-two-dash-five-five-five, zero-two-zero-two-dash-five-seven-four and zero-two-zero-two-dash-one-one-one. Alderman Burke will abstain from voting on these items within the preceding twelve months. Alderman Burke practiced law with the other attorneys in the firm. The other attorneys in the firm represented the former property owners within the preceding twelve months in property tax appeals at the Cook County Assessors Office, Cook County Board of Review and Illinois Property Tax Appeals Board relating to the property. Your Honor, with the exception of Alderman Burke abstaining, we would ask if there's no objections that I move passage of the following items by the last most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam Chairman. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Committee on Environmental Protection and Energy, Chairman Cardenas.
Thank you, Chairman. I want to thank the Mayor for her leadership on climate change. I want to report on the Committee's efforts, which held a meeting on Monday, February tenth, 2020, to consider one item, Resolution two-zero-twenty-dash-eighty-one, resolution is a declaration of a climate emergency and calls for the initiation of an emergency climate mobilization effort. City Council will work with the Mayor's Office and its city departments to develop a budget that promotes urgent climate action, in coordination with the Mayor's environmentalists. We will roll out a climate action plan and a just transition plan by this time next year. This resolution passed unanimously by all committee members present and my co-sponsor of the resolution as well. And as a co-sponsor, I'd like to say a few things. First, we know, and we heard from a lot of folks who spoke today during testimony, that climate change is real, it's making the earth less habitable, and definitely changing our diverse ecosystems. This is happening all over the world. Global warming, just for facts, two degrees Celsius, let alone one-point-five, can be a matter of life and death for vulnerable populations. Take cities, for example, here in the U.S., and I'll give a few cities that are going through, or will be going through tremendous change. Miami will face catastrophic flooding by 2100, New Orleans by 2070, it's estimated that under current trends will be no more. Hate to see New Orleans go, to be honest, a great city. Chicago, by the way, is in one of America's most severe heat zones. I didn't know this until I started researching this. According to scientists from the University of Michigan, that Chicago will experience more severe heat waves like this one and the one that happened in nineteen ninety-five where seven hundred people died due to heat exhaustion. Los Angeles, Seattle as well will face severe flooding, tremendous drought in the upper Los Angeles, California area. And worldwide, cities like Venice are disappearing, Sydney in Australia, Glacier National Park in Montana, our Amazon, the Amazon is facing extreme droughts as well as in jeopardy, Maldives, and again Key West in Florida, Napa Valley, California, Rio de Janeiro, Alaska, Dubai, Abu Dhabi, obviously it's desert, face of your heat waves. The point is that it's real, it's happening to a lot of cities, our worlds is going to change as we know it. There are plans, just in case we don't get it straight, to put a dam on the North Sea costing about five hundred billion dollars. We hope that doesn't get to that point, but that's how extreme it's becoming from a planning standpoint in order to save our cities here in North America and beyond. As we know, our choices matter, especially individual choices, and just not enough that we just say it and hear kind of talking about it to combat climate change. We cannot continue as usual, and this is why I applaud the Mayor's efforts. She just recently declared an emergency on the lakefront, as we know that that's facing severe catastrophic events as well. And it's an issue that we need to manage. So as Chicago declares a climate emergency today, we join over thirteen-hundred other jurisdictions and cities in twenty-seven countries installing the alarm. My co-sponsor, Alderman Martin, not sure if he wants to say a few things as well on this item, that I think is hugely important. I know he's been also out there talking about it, or any other Alderman for that fact, if they wish to speak. I'm happy to yield the floor. All right, there's no-
Got it covered there, Chairman.
There's no objection, I move passage of this item by the last most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance and its associated motion to reconsider. I do appreciate the comment, Chairman.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you so much.
Committee on Health and Human Relations, Chairman Sawyer.
Mr. President and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Health and Human Relations. I must say this, thank you, you're absolutely right, thank you. I'd also be remiss if I did not mention his also legendary mother, Inez Andrews, as well. Appreciate this. Thank you, Madam Chair. I think a couple of my colleagues might want to speak on that as well.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Austin.
Thank you, Madam President. I am just honored to be associated with this resolution, and it says to one of our gospel greats, "But you really need to hear some of the music, because it absolutely stirs your soul." I mean, if you haven't heard any good gospel music, you should listen to that Gibbs. I mean, because it is one that will transcend you from earth to heaven, and I'm grateful to have been able to even receive any of his music that have adorned our family and our household. Thank you so very much, Madam President.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Madam President. Many of you outside of maybe the African-American community during African-American History Month here may not recognize the name of Richard Gibbs, but you do recognize the name of Ray Charles, and you may recognize the name of Fred Nelson. These are men who just call Richard Gibbs one of the best musicians and organists in this country. He's worked with the greats, as we're spelled out here. Everybody loves Aretha Franklin, as you know, but if Aretha Franklin didn't have Mr. Gibbs backing her up, it may not have been so, so beautiful as she sang.
Item number 2, 02020-123, an ordinance to amend section 4-60-130 regarding hours of operation for taverns holding retail food licenses. Alderman Smith, Turney, Riley, Hopkins, and Martin. Four ordinance regarding Maury Turner's embarrassed warts, 36, 42, 44. These recommendations were concurred in by a voice vote of the members of the License Committee on February 13, 2020. Mr. President, I move that the City Council concur in the recommendation of the License Committee by the same roll call as item number one of the Committee on Finance and the same unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chairman. Committee on Public Safety, Chairman Talia Farrow. Oh, excuse me, I'm out of order, excuse me. Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, Chairman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. Reporting for your Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, for which a meeting was held on Thursday, February 13, 2020. Before the committee, there were 298 items. There were 290 routine items that passed and eight routine items that did not pass. There was one item introduced by Alderman Michelle Smith of the 43rd Ward and Alderman Thomas Turney of the 44th Ward. An amendment of the municipal code section 9-64-090 by creating non-for-profit organizations one-day residential parking daily permit pilot program. If there is no objections, I move for the passage of these ordinances in the omnibus. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Committee on Public Safety, Chairman Talia Farrow.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the City Council. Reporting for your Committee on Public Safety, for which a meeting was held on Thursday, February 6, 2020. There was one item before the committee, an amendment of municipal code chapter 8-4 by adding new section 8-4-305 concerning unlawful representation of network drivers. A substitute ordinance was presented and was passed by voice vote. If there are no objections, I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Committee on Transportation in Public Way, Chairman Brookins.
Thank you, Madam President. Reporting for your Committee on Transportation in Public Way, a meeting which was held on February 11, the following ordinances were passed by the majority of the members present. Pages 2 through 25 include 280 ordinances for grants of privilege introduced by the local aldermen from wards 1 through 8, 10 through 12, 14, 16 through 18, 20, 22 through 33, 35 through 50. On page 26 includes 12 ordinances for canopies introduced by the local aldermen from wards 3, 10, 25 through 27, 42, and 45. On page 27 includes eight ordinances for sidewalk cafes introduced by local aldermen from wards 1, 27, 42 through 44, 46, and 47. On pages 28 through 30 include 19 ordinances for miscellaneous items introduced by local aldermen from wards 3, 8, 11, 17, 22, 24, 27 through 29, 42, 43, 45, and 47. On page 31 includes a transportation matter located in the 40th Ward. On page 32 includes subdivision ordinance located in the 32nd Ward. On page 33 includes three vacation ordinances located in the 2nd, 25th, and 35th wards. And on page 33 includes an ordinance for an agreement of easements located in the 42nd Ward. Your Honor, I also would note that Alderman Burke has abstained from voting on the following items. Alderman Burke will abstain from voting on these items. Within the preceding 12 months, Alderman Burke practiced law with other attorneys in the firm. The other attorneys in the firm represented the former property owners within the preceding 12 months in property tax appeals at the Cook County Assessors Office, Cook County Board of Review, and Illinois Property Tax Appeals Board relating to the property. Your Honor, with the exception of Alderman Burke abstaining, we would ask if there's no objections that I move passage of the following items by the last most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. And that concludes our committee reports. Agreed calendar?
Thank you, Madam President. I received from Clerk Anna Valencia a total of 75 items proposed for the agreed calendar consisting of congratulatory, commemorative, and tributary resolutions for the following aldermen. Alderman Dowell, Alderman King, Alderman Sawyer, Alderman Mitchell, Alderman Garza, Alderman Thompson, Alderman Quinn, Alderman Burke, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Coleman, Alderman Moore, Alderman Ramirez, Alderman Austin, Alderman Mitz, and Alderman Riley. I move to passage of the agreed calendar.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. The Chair recognizes Alderman Smith.
Thank you, Madam President. I ask leave for the reading of a resolution to suspend the order of the business in order for the immediate reading of a resolution, if that's possible.
Do we need to read the entirety of the resolutions, or can you summarize them, given that they're multiple pages?
I think the clerk can summarize it.
Chair recognizes Alderman Smith.
Thank you. I don't do this very often, but today we are offering a resolution to honor one of the founders of modern Lincoln Park. Dan O'Donnell has lived in the area, if not his whole life, almost his whole life, and he used to operate a hardware store that I bet many of you people here had been to, Armadillo Hardware. But far beyond that, Dan was a person in our community who helped up people in need, joining every organization that was possible to join, helping to support and found our community organizations, being active even to today in helping a J-1 program to help young kids from Ireland come and work all over the city of Chicago. He is unmatched in his generosity of spirit, and without Dan, I don't think Lincoln Park would be the community that it is today. Well, today is Dan's 80th birthday, or he just celebrated his 80th birthday, or I think it is today. It is today, it's his 80th birthday, and our entire community wanted him recognized before City Council, because as all of my colleagues know, there are special people in every community who make those communities what they are today, and I would like us all to honor Dan and to thank him for his contributions to our wonderful city of Chicago. Thank you, Dan, and his whole family is here today, too.
Chair recognizes Alderman Sawyer for a summary of a resolution.
Yes, thank you. Madam President, I ask that it's been the rules in order to highlight a resolution honoring the music legend Richard Gibbs. And in short, no, it's no relation to the Gibbs Brothers, but a far more outstanding person, an outstanding citizen, a member of the community. He's a master keyboardist, played with the likes of, let me see, Aretha Franklin, played on The Tonight Show, played at the White House. His credits include assisting people like Mavis Staples, the Yancey family, Albertina Walker, Jesse Dixon, the Thompson community singers Fred Hammond, Marvin Sapp, and Yolanda Adams. And I think a couple of my colleagues want to speak on this resolution. Just a great individual, a magnificent pianist, and I think he's walking up right now, well, he's standing up right over in the corner, the illustrious Richard Gibbs.[901.44][901.44](APPLAUSE). Oh, yes. I must say this, thank you. You're absolutely right, thank you.[905.44][905.44](APPLAUSE). I'd also be remiss if I did not mention his also legendary mother, Inez Andrews, as well. Appreciate this.[928.32][928.32](APPLAUSE). Thank you, Madam Chair. I think a couple of my colleagues might want to speak on that as well.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Austin.
Thank you, Madam President. I am just honored to be associated with this resolution, and it says to one of our gospel greats. But you really need to hear some of the music, because it absolutely stirs your soul. I mean, if you haven't heard any good gospel music, you should listen to that Gibbs. I mean, because it is one that will transcend you from earth to heaven, and I'm grateful to have been able to even receive any of his music that have adorned our family and our household. Thank you so very much, Madam President.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Madam President. Many of you outside of maybe the African-American community during African-American History Month here may not recognize the name of Richard Gibbs, but you do recognize the name of Ray Charles, and you may recognize the name of Fred Nelson. These are men who just call Richard Gibbs one of the best musicians and organists in this country. He's worked with the greats, as we're spelled out here. Everybody loved Aretha Franklin, as you know, but if Aretha Franklin didn't have Mr. Gibbs backing her up, it may not have been so, so beautiful as she sang. But gospel music for people who like good preaching, everybody got to be able to play what we call some hymns. Everybody can play hymns, and Richard Gibbs, get on that organ, can play some hymns and can move a church and bring a praise up. Now, as we celebrated the life of Reverend Evans, he loved Richard Gibbs, and he loved Richard Gibbs playing with him, but also the likes of Gordon Humphrey Jr., who he played with for many, played for for so many years. So it's a pleasure for me to stand here and recognize this musical legend during Black History Month, as we just celebrated his birthday on last month. So happy birthday again, and we celebrate you, not only your birthday, but also Black History Month leader. Thank you.[1076.83][1076.83](APPLAUSE).
The Chair recognizes Alderman Coleman.
Thank you, Madam President, and to my colleagues, to Richard, who I grew up, who I grew up as an old Baptist kid and preacher's kid, and when we think of Aretha Franklin, Chain of Fools, Daydreaming, R-E-S-P-E-C-T, something he can feel. A rose is still a rose, and then Inez Andrews, your beautiful mother. Oh, Mary, Don't You Weep, and Albertina Walker, and the Chicago legends right here, because Chicago is truly the birthplace of gospel music, and you have traveled the world representing us so well. I thank God for you. I thank God for your ministry and uplifting. You can make a Hammond organ sing itself, but the works that you have done on a national platform, you truly are our prince of gospel music, and we are so appreciative to honor you and give you your flowers while you can smell them. We love you and God bless you, Richard.[1148.83][1148.83](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, sir. Thank you. I return to Alderman Smith.
I'd like to ask that the previously submitted resolution be included in the omnibus and passed. Thank you.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. The clerk will call the wards, beginning with the 50th.
Claims, free permits, license fee exemptions, which are referred to the Committee on Finance. Zoning amendments, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Traffic regulations, traffic control signals and traffic signs, which are referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Grants of privilege on and over the public way, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. And exemptions from physical burial requirement for commercial driveway alley access to parking facilities, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Almond Martin has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section 4-60-023 to allow additional package goods licenses on portions of West Irving Park Road, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Almond Martin also has proposed a resolution calling for hearings on the efficacy of residential and commercial recycling, yard waste disposal services, and composting of food waste, which is referred to the Committee on Environmental Protection and Energy. Almond Gardner has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed sign boards, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Almond Gardner also has proposed ordinance for vacation of the public alley in the area bounded by North Kilpatrick Avenue, North Milwaukee Avenue, and West Irving Park Road, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Almond Turney has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed sign boards, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Almond Smith has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section 4-60-023 to allow additional package goods licenses on portions of North Lincoln Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Almond Riley has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code chapter 8-4 by adding a new section 8-4-025 entitled "Street Harassment Ordinance," which is referred to the Committee on Public Safety. Almond Riley also has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section 7-38-117 by establishing mobile food vehicle stand on portion of North Franklin Street, which is referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Almond Riley also has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code sections 2-14-132 and 8-4-305 concerning vehicle empowerment and lawful representation of transportation network driver, referred to the Committee on Public Safety. Almond Riley also has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed sign boards, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Almond Riley also has proposed ordinance for repeal of municipal code section 8-4-018 concerning marijuana-flavored candy, which is referred to the Committee on Finance. Almond Napolitano has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed sign boards at 11601 West Twoe Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Almond Villegas has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code chapter 2-92 by adding a new section 2-92-635 concerning trucking services, which is referred to the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Almond Villegas also has proposed orders for amendment of municipal code chapter 2-92 concerning independent minority-owned and women-owned business enterprise program, which is referred to the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Almond Villegas also has proposed a resolution to call for public hearings on capital projects funded by Chicago taxpayers, which is referred to the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development, and a proposed ordinance for the issuance of series of building Chicago neighborhoods general obligation mini-bonds, which is referred to the Committee on Finance. Almond Villegas and others have proposed a resolution to call for racial, ethnic, and gender diversity among corporate and institutional boards, which is referred to the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Almond Telfiero has proposed a resolution to call for hearings on recruitment and hiring of black and Hispanic candidates in Chicago and fire departments, which is referred to the Committee on Public Safety. Almond Telfiero and Alderman Lopez have proposed a resolution to call for hearings on suicide prevention strategies in the Chicago Police Department, which is referred to the Committee on Public Safety. Almond Burnett has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section 4-60-023 to allow additional package goods licenses on portion of West Lake Street, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Almond Burnett also has proposed ordinance for honorary street designation as Honorary JP Graziano Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Almond Burnett also has proposed order for the issuance of permit for assigned sign board at 333 North Green Street, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Almond Burnett also has proposed ordinance for release of restrictive use covenant regarding vacation of North Tallman Avenue between West Fulton Street and West Lake Street, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Almond Scott has proposed ordinance for execution of partial assignment, assumption, and amendment agreement for evidence of land in vacated public alley located in 1200 block of South Sawyer Avenue and South Kidsey Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Almond O'Shea has proposed a resolution to call on Arden Global Capital to invest in Tribune Publishing, which is referred to the Committee on Workforce Development. Almond O'Shea has proposed ordinance concerning regulation of emerging business permits for sale of and prepackaging food and non-alcoholic beverages from mobile food carts, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Almond Lopez has proposed a resolution to call for hearings concerning submitted claims and preventative repeats, which is referred to the Committee on Finance. Almond Lopez and Almond Coleman have proposed a resolution to call for hearings on circumstances of potential breakdown leading to death of horse in Inglewood Community, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Almond Burke has proposed an ordinance for an honorary street designation as Edward J. Schmidt Jr. Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Almond Quinn has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed sign boards at 4014 West 59th Street, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Almond Thompson has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed sign boards, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Almond Harris has proposed orders for an honorary street designation as Reverend Doctor David D. Clay Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Almond Sawyer has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section 4-60-022 to allow additional alcoholic liquor licenses on portion of South Hallsa Street, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Mayor Leiffoot, Alderman Garza, and others have proposed a resolution to call for passage of Illinois Safe Patient Limits Act, which is referred to the Committee on Workforce Development and Audit. Almond Villegas and others have proposed a resolution to call for honor and celebration of League of Women Voters, which is referred to the Committee on Health and Human Relations. Almond Lopez has proposed order to call for the city departments to cease doing business with any business owned and managed by Michael Vandora, which is referred to the Committee on Ethics and Government Oversight. Almond Lopez has proposed a resolution to call for hearings on recycling, waste management, and advanced disposal, which is referred to the Committee on Environmental Protection Almond Maldonado has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Nafali Buzo Reyes Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Mitchell for approval of the journal.
Madam Chairman, I'm not aware of any corrections and move that the journal be approved.
All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed say no. The motion is carried. Miscellaneous business?
Madam President, I'm not aware of any miscellaneous business.
The date and time of the next meeting?
I've handed up an ordinance to the clerk setting the date and time for the next meeting.
Clerk, please read the ordinance.
Almond Mitchell has an ordinance setting the date and time of the next meeting of the City Council of the city of Chicago for Wednesday, March 18, 2020, at 10 o'clock a.m. in the City Council Chamber and City Hall.
Alderman Mitchell?
I move passes in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Roll call on the omnibus?
Almond Laspada, Almond Hopkins, Almond Dowell, Almond King, Almond Hairston, Almond Sawyer, Almond Mitchell, Almond Harris, Almond Beal, Almond Sedlaski-Garza, Almond Thompson, Almond Cardenis, Almond Quinn, Almond Burke, Almond Lopez, Almond Coleman, Almond Moore, Almond Curtis, Almond O'Shea, Almond Taylor, Almond Brookins, Almond Rodriguez, Almond Tabarez, Almond Scott, Almond Sichu Lopez, Almond Maldonado, Almond Burnett, Almond Irvin, Almond Telfiero, Almond Revoyes, Almond Carona, Almond Wagasback, Almond Rodriguez Sanchez, Almond Austin, Almond Marrius Rosa, Almond Villegas, Almond Mitz, Almond Spazaro, Almond Ugent, Almond Villegas, Almond Napolitano, Almond Riley, Almond Smith, Almond Turney, Almond Gardner, Almond Kappelman, Almond Martin, Almond Osterman, Almond Haddon, Almond Silverstein.
The ayes are 50, the nays are zero. Alderman Thompson on the motion for reconsideration?
Madam President, motion to reconsider each and every of the votes.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. Those opposed say nay. The motion fails. Alderman Mitchell on a motion to adjourn?
There being no further business before the body, I move that we adjourn.
All those in favor of the motion to adjourn signify by saying aye. Any opposed say no. The motion is carried, council is adjourned. Thank you.